Good morning, everyone. I bring the meeting to order. Today is the second day of our retreat. It's a full day where council will spend their efforts talking first about their most important project, which is the Town Manager Search. And that will take us to lunch. Then after lunch, we'll pick up on the priorities and targets. So Mr. Martin is not here today. He's had a calamity in his family, and his attention is where it needs to be. We wish him well. And for that reason, the work we do today will largely be setting direction that we'll be able to follow up on and build consensus, which I think is necessary, so we at least have some affirmation about how we're going to move forward. But we'll refrain from making motions and voting on decisions until the plan comes before the full council and Mark is able to see what we've done and prepare for those discussions. So just out of respect for him, we'll navigate that way. So we... Yes. I could hear myself breathe. I didn't think that was a good thing. So I mapped out some general retreat goals to initiate a draft of a cohesive and unified approach for OKI's Town Manager Search, its transition, and the onboarding processes. Those are three core elements of any search. Reexamine and refocus our existing priorities, goals, and objectives, as well as acknowledge ongoing efforts. Discuss council submissions and draft priorities for FY '24 and '25. And to just say a note about that, I had some excellent information come through, and there is a lot of detail on some of them. And I don't, because you don't see it today, I don't want you to think that you're being When we come through with the outcome, whatever document is produced as a result of this, I'll make sure that everyone has those additional priorities. But it was tough to wicker them into something as big as a priority. But I didn't recognize any that don't need to be addressed. And then to discuss council submissions and draft priorities for a longer term, so where we can look out for one to three years, and then share your thoughts about the day using four topics: observations, takeaways, parking lot entries, and next steps. So we're going to... Let me see a flip chart. But we do have Post-it notes, I believe. They might be in my mailbox. We'll get them at the break. Otherwise, just in your own notepad, if you have questions or concerns that we may have moved past, don't lose those. Normally, there is a place where you can write those items on a Post-it note and place it in a particular place, and we review it at the end. In my scurrying about this morning, I forgot to pick those up out of the office. I'll do that at the break. So this is the agenda, which you've all had in your hands, same one that came out, and the afternoon agenda. We certainly have the opportunity to shift this as we go. I'm not being a snickler. It's really more to organize our conversations. And you'll notice when there is a handout in the packet that you received this morning, it will tell you which handout it is to make it a little easier to follow along. Any questions before we get started? No? We're good? I've been very impressed and don't want to fail to remark at how well council has moved through some really difficult issues and gotten some monumental things through in terms of ordinances. You're to be congratulated. It's very nice to see, and I hope we're able to cooperate and collaborate and work through any differences we have as we approach probably the most challenging goal that we'll have, and that's the search for the next town manager. So just some suggested guidelines. I don't think I've ever had to ask, encourage y'all to talk. Usually, it goes the other way around. This council is very good about expressing themselves. But as you do so, just if you can make sure that everyone has an ample opportunity to speak, I'll try to monitor that. And there's the third is about the parking lot that I'll set up at the break. Any other conventions for group discussion you want to add to the list? Thank you very much. We good? There you go.
Oh, WCU.
Oh, Ravens. So the importance of a thoughtfully planned, cohesive, and skillfully executed search for our next town manager is really paramount to the success of our town's future. So if you think at a minimum, the next town manager would commit to five years, that's a long time, and a number of things will be set in motion as we go. And this individual will be at the helm to guide us through to how Oak Island unfolds as we grow. Something I want to make sure we all have full sight of about the search process, these things are time-intensive and seemingly complex. They contain a number of moving parts that really need to be coordinated to ensure that everything aligns. So as an example, we'll talk about a profile, candidate profile today, and that needs to line up with the job description, needs to line up with what we're asking or how we're evaluating the manager. So they're just how framing the interview questions, all of those things really extend from the very early documents in the process. And then everything has to come together. I'm assuming no one person can produce all that needs to be produced in this process, and it will all need to come together when it needs to come together. So time is of essence. So as a lead-in, I thought we'd spend a few minutes envisioning Oak Island's future. So the preface is that the characteristics, qualifications, and credentials of a town manager we seek will in part cascade from the future we envision for our town. So close your eyes if you will. I'll give you prompts along the way. I will record. But the activity is this. So if you will, describe the ideal characteristics of how you see the future of Oak Island. So this is not... This is one opportunity to expand your thinking beyond what is realistic and doable, but you're really kind of creating the nirvana of Oak Island. Because if that's where we want our town manager to take us, then we need to make sure that how we see Oak Island in the future is connected to the skills and abilities that we seek in a new town manager. So we'll capture the responses on the whiteboard. You ready? Take a minute. Thinking about the Oak Island you aspire to, and this is beyond even some of your term endings. What do you see and hear in that Oak Island? Look around. What are you seeing in your mind's eye, so to speak? What does Oak Island look like? You can just call them out unless you want to take a minute to think about it.
I look downtown areas. That includes walkability and bikability.
Okay, we'll get one. There we go. What else do you see?
You use a campaign point, Liz. It's a community of residents which supports a tourism industry. So we need to stay focused on that, that resident first and tourist second in our priorities.
That's a core value, is it not?
Maybe a subset under that would be diverse local businesses.
What else do you see?
I see trees. I see lots of trees. I see a dedicated commitment from council to reforest our right-of-ways, especially on Oak Island Drive.
Yeah, so attractive street skates.
Absolutely.
Attractive, uncluttered, street skates.
Yeah, that's fine.
Bill, how about you?
I hope we get a chance to comment on each thing that's put up.
Yeah.
Because I already have a lot of comments, but to put on the board, vibrant recreation center.
So if you have other ideas, we'll add them. But how would you experience your community? What are some descriptions that would describe your experience? What are you doing? How do you spend your free time?
I want to go up a level here, and like the council, perhaps we'll come back and comment on a couple of things that are there, that pursue some clarifying. So I think the 30,000-foot view, if that's what you were looking for, five years out...
A little further than five, John, but...
Five to 10.
It's an ideal...
Whatever the time horizon is, I would hope that Oak Island has become a model for coastal communities. That ought to be our aspiration. We are the model. By that, I think we can quantify that a little bit. I think we could demonstrate that we have a high quality of life, hence directly by our strategic planning.
I like that.
I'm presuming we get one that actually works. We are a model for environmental protection, which encompasses some of the things that have already been put up there. Our citizens and our visitors offer a unique set of opportunities, art, culture, recreation. We have transformed, I think Terry brought this up, we have transformed our CR, vibrant, dynamic.
CR, John?
Or...
CR?
Yes. The Main Street, commercial recreation.
Oh, okay.
If you had that kind of encapsulation, there's a lot of other things that we need to...
Definitely. And you had one between high quality of life as a result of council's efforts?
Yeah. And the nice thing about quality of life, leaving aside current controversies on the part of some folks, that can be measured.
It certainly can. And I missed this one in here.
And I would hope consequently, when we talk about model community, quality of planting, life, environmental protection, availability of unique commerce, unique cultural, artistic opportunity, that those are kinds of things that can be measured in terms of the resident visitor experience.
The metrics are high. Satisfaction metrics.
I think one thing I'd like to add to John's, if I may, it's kind of a higher-level view, is that we have a town that operates particularly in a public eye with high integrity, efficiency. We're a lean, mean fighting machine, if you will, and that citizens and council and other entities outside of our town have confidence in how we operate and how we perform. Sorry.
Are you fine?
And that would entail, you know, any number of things as we start to dive into the details, you know, make sure our processes work, that we're on top of things like code enforcement. You know, Liz, it's a long list, but it's more in the details.
And I'm happy to... I don't want to get too much closer to this mic. It's weird. I'm happy to endorse that amplification from Terry because, to me, part and parcel, an integral aspect of being a model community is your organization's functioning at a high level, which is transparent, efficient, you know, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, that's a given.
One thing I'd like to add, if I could, is we heard, again during the campaign, that the folks at South Harbor didn't really feel like they're part of Oak Island. They felt like they're part of the South Harbor community. And my concern I have is the same thing might happen naturally with Pine Forest, and if the Williamson tract is ever built out, they become their own community. So I'd like to focus more on how do we become more of an inclusive community, which incorporates on-island as well as all off-island residents, so we collectively call ourselves Oak Island rather than individual communities.
So I mean, I think that's a concern, because I know Bob shares part of my background. It could be the case that we have the five boroughs, and yet we're all New Yorkers, and that's going to take some work, right? We're all New Yorkers unless you live in Staten Island, then you're really not a New Yorker. You got my metaphor?
You said we need a... So what is it like to navigate through our community? I think any number of modes, walking, biking, LSV, car. Well, overall, it's safe.
Yeah. I'd like to just expand that statement a little bit. The clear imperative to me is to make the CB walkable on both sides. We've talked about green lays. We've talked about the importance of, from a safety standpoint, crosswalks. At best, that's a work in progress. We're years away from completing that. That really needs to be central to the experience. From my point of view, you're never going to achieve the kind of status that I think many of us, all of us, hopefully aspire to, where people are struck by the beauty of the town, access to its resources, and its shopping and cultural things, if you can't walk. It's problematic.
And I'd expand on that, that on Beach Drive, I would say is not quite as safe, trying to cross Beach Drive. People riding bikes on Beach Drive, people walking on Beach Drive, especially during tourist season, it's the degree of safety, I think, is highly suspect. And as we look towards any more crosswalks, then I believe that's a good way to address it. You know, maybe it's a speed limit issue, maybe it's, you know, more crosswalks issue, but it really, during tourist season especially, you know, it is sometimes, it's like the old video game Frogger, you know, watching people trying to get across Beach Drive is a scary thought. Unfortunately, we've avoided any catastrophes, but I think a big focus on that.
I'd like to build just a bit on the previous mentions of the CB district. I'd really like to see each of them kind of take on their own identity and be a cluster of shops. Pathetically, one could be the Yopon District and one the Long Beach District, just as a nod to history, but they truly become destinations of their own and are very walkable.
And per Bob's point, ultimately, you're going to have a CB in Williamson and Pine Forest, and what's the name of that other community? The alphabet soup. Does it have a name?
Drapac.
And drapac. God love it. They all have their own commercial centers, which hopefully will be attractive, walkable, safe, et cetera. That should be a template that goes across the community.
You know, you look at... You can see evidence of the different districts in larger cities that we've all traveled to and seen, but just our, you know, our neighbor Wilmington, they have, you know, there's the Brooklyn Arts District, and there's the Container District, and so just, you know, places you can identify that have a character of their own, and I think that would be cool if we had something like that.
So solve our LSV problem. Are there routes, navigable routes for LSVs that don't include the major markets?
Depends where you're going. We tend to use our LSV as frequently as possible, and, you know, as I've mentioned before, driving an LSV on Yacht Drive is a very dangerous undertaking. And it's very hard, if not impossible, to avoid putting your... Driving your LSV on Oak Island Drive, you know, even if you tried to time it coming up, you know, 51st Street by Publix, and if I'm going to go over to Paul's, I make a left on Oak Island Drive, and I have to go up three blocks to get to Paul's. So it's physically impossible to keep, consistently keep LSVs off Oak Island Drive. In an ideal world, we would be successful with that. However, due to the nature of our streets and it not being consistent when they cross Oak Island Drive, there is a point where most drivers would have to get on it on Oak Island Drive. One of the things that I wanted to ask as well is before we move on, you know, we think about with the 211 winding, the lines of demarcation between Southport and Oak Island will begin to blur. So if we haven't started having regular conversations with our, the Southport leadership, I think that would be crucial and critical for us to make sure that we are all singing from the same sheet of music, that they know what we're up to, we know what they're up to, and we seek economies of scale and efficiencies, if that's an opportunity.
Can you say that in fewer words?
Collaboration with Southport Council.
Caswell?
And Ca... Excuse me. They happen to be on our island. Caswell. And so, Southport.
What are our residents and our visitors saying about us? You should know they call you...
Depends if you talk to 10,000 or if you talk to 20. Depends upon who you talk to.
This is the future, so we're creating a future...
People come here because they've been told it's paradise. They come here to enjoy beautiful Oak Island.
I'm hearing more and more concerns about short-term rentals and the impact that they have on residents who live here, because all the short-term rentals are not just on the beach strand right now. They're starting to move into the island, and so they end up next to folks who perhaps work, or kids who go to school, and renters are on vacation, and so it's party central. And it's, I'm starting to hear more and more of that from residents, it's just a concern about how we're going to manage short-term rentals.
So 10, 7, 10 years out from this model... So 10, 7, 10 years out, in this model, since we're envisioning an ideal, we've solved that one, right?
I would hope so.
Well, before we, because you asked me to talk, Madam Mayor, so you have five minutes left in this segment, by the way. What we don't have up there is the elephant in the room. So, and we do, in the sense that if we were a model community and we had a strategic plan, we could do any number of things. But it seems to me that we need to identify the number-one issue for the last, since I've been involved in politics here seven years, and that's managing growth effectively. And that goes to rentals and a variety of other things. And that's a much longer discussion because of legal, cultural constraints, property rights, you know, there's a lot of things embedded in that. But this future that we're talking about, if growth is not managed, then effectively we will not be a model community, and many of the problems we have up there are not going to get resolved. So, that, I know that's a term that's been bandied about, but, and I don't know if managing is really the term. Maybe it's modulating, or, or smart growth, or we could talk about what that means. That's part of what the new manager, from my point of view, needs to take on. Because we're not a sleepy little fishing village, we're not a quaint stop, we're an exploding community. And I just, I want to go back, I don't know if I'm pushing on this, I, this dichotomy that's up there, you know, residents, tourists, if pushed to the extreme is a false dichotomy. Because everyone who comes here and lives here, even for a brief period of time, is entitled to certain privileges, certain accesses. And so, to me, the more we drive on that, that leads us down a blind alley, and I don't want to do that. I understand there's a difference between residents, like all of us, who pay taxes and live there year-round, and visitors. But at some point, there has to be a communal experience. Especially why, in fact, our economy is driven by tourism, whether you'd like it or not, right? I think the answer is to manage it, to make it smart, to make it effective, and at least pleasant, tolerable, for both, both of the parts. So I'm a little leery chopping up the willing for those two blocks.
Maybe if I could, maybe I'll suggest changing what I said about tourists, and maybe we change that to investors. So we have a balance between residents and investors rather than residents and tourists. And to reinforce what John just said, assuming the validity of the survey, the recent survey, we had a significant great response. The number-one concern that people had was uncontrolled growth. And if we do nothing else today, but we can come up with a overarching strategy on how we can collectively control growth, that would be, you know, a huge undertaking. And it would make this a very successful effort that we're doing here today.
I agree. I think, I think that growth is, managing growth, strategizing for growth is the overarching issue that we have to deal with. So many other things are tied to that. And if we're going to be successful as a community, as a town, we've got to get a handle on that, or we're going to become something else.
Well-
Talking about elephant in the room, just about everything that is up there, and I hope we do get to comment on each line, we've got to get a communication with the planning board. The UDO, we're saying we want to welcome businesses. The UDO doesn't welcome businesses. We need to have communication with the planning board as to what we want to see them address. We can come up with a wish list a mile long, but if the UDO still has special use permits for 5,000-square-foot houses, we need to put a lot of nice words on the board. We need to communicate our expectations and work hand in hand with these different advisory boards that we have, so they'll know where we're wanting to go, and we know why they're going where they're going.
Well, may I suggest that this is probably part of a small, interrelated set of problems that are, that are mission-critical. Well, getting an SP, getting a UDO that works, then allows us, to some degree, to manage growth. And I think we're not going to be able to do that today with an agenda this long. But I think we should have a meeting on a strategy to manage growth, solely devoted to that. What can be done? Because part of what's involved here is disabusing, that's the wrong word, changing the perspective that some folks have, right? So, Mr. Williamson has property rights. We're not in a position to tell him he can't develop his property. Therefore, what are the reasonable constraints that we can impose? We need to have that meeting in depth, I agree with Bob completely, and see if we can sharpen our pencils about that. And certainly, the planning board becomes critical there. And getting an SP becomes critical. And getting management that's really positioned to deal with the number-one problem. It wasn't the number-one problem when I bought my house in 2005. It simply was not. The sewer system wasn't. You know how well we did with that. So, we, I think we need to devote our time and attention to what we seem to believe is the key problem. And that, we'll need Mark, because he has a different perspective on some of this. We'll need Brian. We'll need to do some research about what are effective plans that manage growth in a smart way. That's a, to me, that's a day all on to itself. It's up there.
I'd like to say, as I'm driving down Oak Island Drive, that we see the benefit, or at least the beginnings of, new town facilities, new office space, space for the community center. We talked about the rec center already. I didn't want to leave the community center out. But we definitely need expansion of our town facilities for staff and the administration. I'd like to see that beginning to fruition.
Now, Mayor?
Yes, I'm out of time.
Do you need a timeout, something?
Let me add just two words, if I could.
Not quite done, so.
When we think about, we look at all these bullets that we have up here, I mean, two things that resonate with me that come out of that are strategy and collaboration. So, strategy, you know, we tend to, we're very, we as a community, we're task-driven rather than strategy-driven. So a strategy for overdevelopment, a strategy, if we can pump up four or five of those again, and that would be our mission for 2024. And then collaboration. So whether it's between council and staff, whether it's between all of our boards and committees, and council, boards and committees, and staff, collaboration is not nearly at a level that it really should be for us to run on all six cylinders, or four cylinders, depending on what kind of car you're driving.
Or the battery.
So, we've kind of covered down, except for the last, what awards and special recognition? I'll make them up if I want to. Other town we see. Again, this is just another perspective of others recognizing how well we do.
Well, I'll answer that. I mean, because we've got too many bullets already. If, if growth is the number-one issue, right, then I think, and we have strategy that was successful ultimately, let's say due to collaboration, then hopefully we would get an award designated as a smart growth community. A community that had absorbed thousands of new residents and tens of thousands of traditional visitors, and did so successfully and close. And that's , to keep this simple. I don't think there's such a need.
We, we can make one up.
We can make one up and give it to ourselves.
Yeah, that golden something, right?
A plaque. So many people will say, out on the street, "I drive over that bridge and I just smile when I see Oak Island, the beauty of Oak Island." I think we are already regarded as a beautiful destination. My wife even says it every time she drives over that bridge, "Oh, I love driving over this bridge and seeing Oak Island."
Another I'd like to see, I know other towns do this, and actually, some aspect of the state does it as well. I would like to see the, what's the right word, the transformation of our CB districts, have been so successful, that it becomes a model for others. So, you know, they're writing magazine articles about us, and asked to speak about where.
That goes back to what I said earlier, though. Our UDO, our mindset needs to be that we welcome businesses, not make it so difficult for a business to come here. We need to be welcoming.
Is there anything I haven't captured at this point? If I make anyone correct, anything you want to edit? It's a great list.
Madam Mayor, would you like to, you want to take a picture of that?
I would love to.
That way it's captured.
Yes. I'm going to leave it up to him.
I think in general, while we may not know every award that might be out there today, I would hope that as we started to make progress, smart growth, environmental preservations of our ICW and our beach, that those things will start to come, those things will start to come forward. So it goes back to John's, that we're recognized as a model, I think you said it, model community.
And since we're looking out as far as we are, 10 years, 20 years, it's a model community on finding alternative methods to beach nourishment that don't rely solely on dredging sand. Now, we know that there are some other options that are out there, but we've got, again, 10 to 20 years with some really smart people. Let's see what other options that we can come up with that would be the right, make sense financially for our community.
So, the next, and I really don't want to, if I flip this whiteboard over, will you remember what's there? Anyone else want to take a picture of it? We're going to play from this to do the next exercise. Do you want me to get a picture of you?
I got it.
Sorry for the chicken scratch. So, moving on, the search process typically begins with the development of a candidate profile that identifies the key knowledge, skills, abilities, experiences, education, personal attributes, and other characteristics you might deem important, that we as an organization seek in what we would hold as a qualified candidate. So, toward that end, we reflect on this exercise. So, eight, nine, 10 years out, these are a reality. We've been able to achieve all of these things. So, take a minute, if you want to write in your notepads first. But what are the qualifications of the candidate needed to guide today's Oak Island toward the future Oak Island we envisioned? And I'll flip this. I think. We'll have to rotate it. We'll just roll it around. Bottom thing of my checks. Thank you. Hey. That's one. I have some others I can read. One of the pieces I left out of the, I didn't make it into the packet, from scurrying about. But I do have a list of qualifications.
I wrote, I wrote down four key words, real quick.
Go ahead.
Awareness of the issues. Leadership ability. Team building. Five, actually. Networking.
Trying to think of the script for, Season.
Liz, can you go, I'm sorry, can you go over to the right, just to save time, to the right-hand side of the board? So, minimum requirements, well-educated, fully credentialed. Let's just start there. And then, we'll go back to your list. Well-educated-
Fully credentialed.
Fully credentialed.
I agree.
Right underneath that, again, these are my minimum requirements, demonstrated history of successful project and operations management. I'm not going to consider anybody who doesn't have that. And then, go ahead, Bill.
Okay, that's, that's good.
Operations and project management.
You can put an M next to that for me. That's a minimum.
Fiscally responsible, on my note.
I'm not trying to do mine. I'm trying to put light things together.
Yeah.
So I had a couple of sort of the same things. Toward fiscally responsible, I had financial acumen.
I just didn't know how to spell acumen.
You want to define that, Counselor? Wow. Now we've got acumen. This, this will be good.
High integrity. Demonstrated high integrity. I like, I like John's word, demonstrated. A strategic and innovative thinker.
You're taking all my good stuff, too.
Okay, I'll stop. I'm going to let, let Bob go.
This is, this is really great. A lot of the same thoughts that I had already put down. One thing I'd, collaboration. So someone who, collaboration is in their DNA.
It's just the way that they operate. Collaboration with their team, collaboration with all of staff, collaboration with the boards and committees, with town council, with the community. But collaboration, two-way communication, integral part of the community.
So I wrote down within and without. So basically, everything within and then outside our community.
And I have the same thing, just the verbiage is different, so you don't need to put it up there. I have collaborative leadership profile, but it's the same thing. I want to add a couple of things that I think are important beyond what's already there, which is important. Well, he or she, the next manager, needs to be a highly skilled communicator to a variety of audiences, both internal and external, to your point. I want to, I'd like to expand on this strategic thinker kind of profile of the building here. I would say he or she next manager needs to be capable of orchestrating a new direction. You can put change in parentheses if you like. Although that's jargon that sometimes has bad connotations, but.
Capable of, how did you say it first time?
Capable of orchestrating a new direction.
New direction in.
Policy, strategy, managing growth, adapting to changed circumstances. When David started seven years ago, this was a very different world. There were different demands. We're all sitting here because it's changing so rapidly, we don't have a handle on it. And one last thing I like, you can just, you can put this in quotes, it's not mine. Leads from the front, which is the motto of the airborne managers. So I think we need a manager who is going to make the difficult decisions and is going to take them on.
I would like to include readily accepts accountability as administration.
And one last thing, I don't know if we can actually put this in a public document. So this is a Brian question, I guess, but from my seat only, I'm looking for someone who is in a career position to make a multi-year commitment to us. So I almost want to say mid-career, but I think we want someone for the long haul, if we can get that person. I'm not sure how you parse that without discriminating, like, on an age or experience. Well, we're discriminating on an experience basis, I guess, but in the back of my mind, that's going to be what I'm thinking about. Is this person right for us and are the, are the conditions of their, their unique candidacy going to lead to the potential that they'll be here for multi-years? That's a very wary explanation, what I'm thinking. You can put a question mark next to that one. I don't know if that's legally, legal on profile.
Well, we can ask point-blank questions. Do you plan on looking for a home here for quite some time?
That's why I put it in the home, this is instead of years. But I really wouldn't hire anyone who's, who has an intention to give us at least five years. The process is just too long, too complex.
Putting financial teeth into the employment agreement, you know, having some deferred compensation bonuses for every year that they stay on. The team is a way to do it. I mean, trying to, try to put some kind of limitation that, here's the employment agreement and you must commit to staying here five years is, that's fraught with issues that would not be able to get past an employer. But we've.
You could do one of two ways, and it's not for this morning because it's too complex. You can have a longevity incentive, right? Or you could have a performance bonus that's annual, depending on how you use your instrument to evaluate. Either way, you're providing an incentive for someone who selects Oak Island to stay.
You know, my, my, my comment on that and my thoughts are certainly it would behoove us to, to find someone who we think would commit to five to eight to maybe even 10 years with us. We certainly don't want to go through this again in two years. However, if we find the right person and we can get five to eight years out of them, you know, I'm, I'm not looking for a 20 or 30-year employee. I think a five to eight year can get us through, get us, really get us to where we are wanting to be. So.
I agree.
There's kind of a, there's kind of a trade-off in there, a balance, if you will, that we're going to have to look at.
Anything else you think is really, really, really important? The great list. We can always add, so if you want to use the marker and add to.
You know, when we do open it up and we do have community engagement meetings soliciting input from our community, I suspect we'll come up with a lot more criteria as well.
Well, I'm hoping that the community will affirm much, if not all, of what we have up there. And I know that I don't need to issue this, this is really just for the public tuning in. We, we can create an awesome profile, we're already halfway down that road. It is unlikely that you're going to find someone who checks every box. It's just not going to happen. So, in a way, the more we add, the harder it's going to be, you know, we're following our own profile. But yes, I think it will be very interesting to see what the community does with a preliminary profile and what they prioritize.
I just have to keep an eye on how I'm going to hold the heart. Do you want to do this next one or do you want me to do it? So, this leads us, we've begun to frame who it is we're looking for, right? So now let's begin to frame the process by where, by which we will find them. So here are just some initial questions that John has put together and I've edited a little bit to make them questions. I hope you don't mind. So let's talk about the first one. This is about whether we use a professional search firm or we work with the assistance of regional resources to conduct the search, which means the North Carolina League of Municipalities, the Cape Fear Cog. One versus the other, what one gets us is, makes, we have to do a lot of the upfront work, but then they do the majority of the organizing, the seeking, using the networks that they've built in their professional field to find us who we're looking for. So they take that part out of our hands. Working with the cog or the league, we would still be in a position of having to do a good bit of that work.
I think we should use a hybrid. I think we should use the cog, they're available to us. We should use the League of Municipalities, they're available to us. We should use our in-house, we have an HR department. We need to see what, who's contacting our HR department. We need to use every tool we've got, which also means we need to use outside search firms. We're looking for somebody, hopefully for longer than five years, hopefully for an eight or 10 or 12-year period. We need to do it right.
I appreciate you saying that.
And we also, though, and we haven't said it yet, and they're in the room, Lisa knows a whole lot more about the town manager role than I do. David knows a whole lot more about the town manager role than I do. We need to consult our own people to see what we're overlooking, what we're not, what, Lisa knows day-to-day what is involved. So I want to turn over every stone, use every tool we've got available. Ask Catherine, that's the financial director, what, what does she hope for in account manager? So we just, the cog, League of Municipalities, outside search firms, our own people, do it right.
I, you know, we have one perspective based on the work we do and the days that we sit behind, but I think it's important to ask the key stakeholders, the staff to some extent, the public to some extent, that's one of the questions. So I'm jumping ahead, but you know, you just never know when you might find that pearl or just have tremendous affirmation for what you've already mapped.
So I think that, that Bill mentioned great resources. Having participated in this kind of process many times in my career, I've thought a little bit about this and I, I envision using resources like the cog and the league and our staff as resources. We go to them when we need something specific that, that they have the expertise to provide. In terms of the search process itself, I think we, my feelings are that we need to use a professional search firm. There are two varieties of those, retained and.
Be contingent.
Contingent. And, and we'll need to look at, look at that and discuss those. But it is likely, and the concern I have about involving staff too much in the process is that we may very well, well, may not, have internal candidates. And this kind of, this kind of search for an executive leader is going to have to be highly, highly, highly confidential because if not, we could be putting somebody's career at risk. So we have to be very, very thoughtful about how we do it, but, but I agree, there are a lot of resources out there and we need to tap into those. I firmly believe that we're looking for a regional or a national search.
Could we just answer our next question?
Sorry.
Now, I was going to, so I'm going to ask a question, I'm going to hold it though, but no, I agree that, you know, using every possible avenue, you know, I suspect that a national recruiting firm will give us a caliber of candidate that might be a little bit higher than some of the other methods we're talking about. However, I, again, like, like Bill was saying, we don't want to leave any stone unturned. There is a cost associated with a search firm. It's typically 30% of the salary, paid in three different increments, a third upfront, a third in the middle, and a third upon hiring that individual or shortly thereafter. Is there a cost, using the cog or the League of Municipalities, is there a cost associated with that?
I doubt.
But is that a upfront cost or is that a back-end?
We're members.
We are members, but I think the, the deal often, the only time we used the league was to find an area, you know, thinking of costs, not like that. And how do you cost or do, or search costs?
We'll want to find that one out, especially if it's, if it's a back-ended fee, that's fine, if they bring us a candidate, but if we have to, if it's a front-ended fee, then we need to take that into consideration.
All right, before you go, I'm hearing two things. First of all, I, I support the Council of the Crafts, we'll call it a hybrid model for want of a better word. I agree with Terry, we need to be very careful. We probably need to bifurcate staff and regional resources unless we need them to put this in the hands of a, of a national search firm. Bear in mind that our search for the assistant manager came up with two candidates. So I think we need to cast the net in a wide, in a wide way. What's interesting, I'm looking at what we did just a few moments ago, experience with beach re-nourishment is not up there. I'm okay with that, provided, you know, the person that we select, he or she, has to be so supremely talented that they'll be able to work through that, right? And you're thinking about, I shared this with Bob the other night, Kennedy was once asked what his requirement for State Department personnel would be if selecting them. He said, I can tell you, in one word, smart. And that's what we need, right? We need somebody who can do all of these things, who's visionary, who's ethical, who's, has acumen in the budget and can pick up what David has started with beach re-nourishment. So the only way you get that is a national search. You bring in top people, you, the implication here, just so we're all clear, is that you're going to pay top dollar to, not just to the firm, but you're going to have to land someone and it's going to cost money, right? So that's something we need to think about down the road.
Like you said, though, on your, on the right hand of the board, a demonstrated history of success. So an experienced town manager will know how to manage a town.
Or an experienced, you know, rising assistant who's talented and blocked for whatever reason. Yeah, I mean, there'll be options.
And we've also talked about if, if needed, to pay David an advisory situation to get us through phase three, if need be. So I'm not as concerned about understanding sand as I am about just being successful and know how to manage a town.
And I'm really looking for the personal investment. So someone who has demonstrated that they're personally invested in environmental and shoreline preservation. I don't know that they have to have the resident expertise. They certainly will learn the language, try to make it easier to communicate with people they have to communicate with, but.
Look at it another way. You know, having walked into five different school organizations, right? A much larger budget than we have, more employees, but still, this is a complex community. There are challenges, right? It's a complex body politic. You've got 175 employees, a $30 million budget, you've got lots of debt to deal with, potential debt, actual debt, you've got an exploding, potentially exploding, you know, this is a complicated spot. We really need somebody with experience, with above all talent. They have to be able to do it. They have to be able to be an executive, can dream a little bit, but who can still deliver operationally. You're not going to find them on the street corner, say, but not many of them have.
And I'd be surprised if cog or League of Municipalities has our person, but we should go that direction early on.
Yeah, we agree.
I mean, they found Charlie Miller, they found Lee Price, and we're happy. I'd be surprised that we should go that route early on.
We did, and they're both excellent.
Yeah.
Employees and fines, but this is.
I know. That's what I'm saying, I'd be surprised, but we should go that route. I mean, there might be a jewel sitting right now somewhere.
Turn over every stone approach.
Turn over every stone approach.
So, one thing that really struck me in a very long conversation with Alan Serkin, who's the executive director of the cog, was that the person we're looking for is likely happily employed elsewhere in the municipal system in some way, shape, or form, and doesn't even know he's interested in this job, which is incumbent upon us to have. even know he's interested in this job, which is incumbent upon us to have to sell Oak Island and the prospects, the really cool things they'll get to do here that they may or may not have done elsewhere. You never know why someone takes a job at the beginning, but Alan painted the picture that it, very easily, he'll go home and, "Oh, I got a phone call from Oak Island, they have a position open." And the wife go, "Oh, I always wanted to go to Oak Island," and turns in his resignation and
I think one thing we might ought to add to the list, based on the notes I saw from your conversation with Alan Serken, or maybe you can clarify, he said they really don't want to be the search, they don't want to be the search agent for us. He recommended us not using them.
Doesn't want to, he, I mean, if he hears of something, he's going to pass it along. But he doesn't want to run the search, and his words were too big and were too complex. And he would not have someone on staff who could take that, who could take that on effectively. And the, you know, but his willingness to help is there. And then there was another component to that, that they don't even feel like they could provide an interim. We wouldn't, it doesn't suggest we look there or look to them for an interim, for a Plan B, which is a later question. You good? You have an idea of maybe how to approach this one?
The answer is one and two.
The scope of the process?
National.
We want national?
Yes.
Circle that one. Should we solicit public input to the process? I know there's some mixed reactions to that, but let's talk that through.
Absolutely, without question. We heard it, we heard it in the campaign. I think it's likely that we may not hear anything new from what we've come up with today, but to go through this process and not involve the citizens is a bad message to communicate to them. And there are creative ways to do that, and I've talked to you and I think even maybe to John about them by creating what you call a listening session. And it's a facilitated guided process where people sit in groups, maybe six or eight or 10 to a table. You provide questions that help to get people thinking, and then you have a facilitator at that table, and at the end of the conversation, 15 or 20 minutes, whatever it is, you record what each table has come up with as their concerns, issues, priorities, wants, wishes. But that's kind of an aside. For me, we absolutely have to include the public.
I like that approach a whole lot better than people coming to a forum at Town Hall and throwing rotten tomatoes.
You have to structure it or you're just not going to get anything good out of it.
You have to be clear about what you want out of it and then structure it so that you get it.
I think there's unanimous agreement on this. I mean, I can't, I'm fairly, I'm confident Mark would also agree. The question is how, you know, what's the mechanism, and that's something we can sort out. I think we also need to get feedback from the current staff, too, right? All of the stakeholders should be touched.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
To do it right, and again, turning over every stone. I like Terry's idea. I like the staff idea. Maybe we need Monday for one group, Wednesday for another group. We're going to have to admit, we're going to have to spend a lot of time. So maybe we need to hear from the staff one day, and then a day or two later, hear from the community. And then we turn over every stone.
Well, I try to put myself in their shoes and even asking the question and recording the answers. Not that I in any way would do this as an insincere gesture, but affirms that they're important.
There's people, and I don't know their names, but there's people that work at the utility department. There's people that work downstairs taking up utility bills. They're nervous right now, wondering what their future looks like. We need to ask those people, what do you want your future to look like? And then take it under advisement. We may agree with what we hear from people on Monday, we may agree with what we hear from people on Wednesday, we may not agree, but we listened and took it into consideration.
One thing I was asked was that the morning, afternoon, and a weekend, to allow people with different work schedules to
Yeah, I think, I think that's a critical point.
Two groups.
You've got to have different day parts to try to give everybody an opportunity. Folks who work will be more likely to come in the evening or the weekend, folks who don't might come during the day.
I'll bet on that.
No, that's okay. I mean, I like that, I like that structure a lot more than just having an open mic. Open mic, the feedback is not going to be great, it'll be, could be somewhat slanted, but if you structure it the way that Terry's talked about structuring it, that we have table facilitators, we have a series of questions, five or six, and then we list the attributes that we've already listed. So let's see what resonates rather than, than, rather than using the listening session to simply reinforce what we've already said, is have that out there so they can see that and then let us know what's most important to them and did we miss anything. I think that doing three separate sessions, giving people the ultimate opportunity to participate is really important. I look at the signal that that sends to the community. We heard that loud and clear throughout the campaign process that they, a lot of residents in the community feel like they are not heard anymore, and we're going to eliminate that by beginning this community engagement process. Future community engagement meetings, maybe an open mic, it makes perfect sense for them to ask questions, but for this one specific, I think this needs an awful lot of structure.
So
Sooner rather than later.
Yeah, because the last thing I think we want to do as a council is release, here's what we're looking for, and we haven't solicited anybody.
Yeah.
We gotta
Early on.
Make sure that we consider what we get, and there's probably going to be things we can use.
Well, I agree with everything that's been said. I'll make another point, however, jumping ahead to transition planning. In order to succeed as the next manager, he or she needs to follow a process that was thoughtful, systematic, confirmed by the public in the sense that they had a voice, even if it's not the person they would have chosen, right? That's all key to the success of their next manager. So it's not a matter of should we do this, it's a matter of how do we do this, right? That's the issue. Because that sets the stage for the introduction of the new manager six months from now, right? They walk in knowing there's been a community process and they meet criteria. And we have, I don't want to get into transition
They'll feel appreciated.
You would also ultimately want the candidate to meet stakeholders in the community in some orderly fashion. So it's all part of the same thread, is what I'm saying. If that makes sense.
So the first two things that really need to be developed, and if we're going with a hired search firm, there's a possibility they would even write the job description for us if we might want them to.
We tell them our criteria.
And let them write the process, let them write the document? Or we could, we could give them the raw data and let them wick it into something that um
And they'll bring four or five people. They'll interview 20 and they'll bring us their top three or four, if we're lucky.
Hold on, let's not, let's not go too fast here. So you have state code, you have the charter, and we can certainly get sample job descriptions from corresponding communities, so we have a place to start, so they don't, they're not writing it
Yeah.
Right? From the beginning. And then, of course, when this profile gets cleaned up, then we have a profile, right? So we give them all the data they need to write a job description, and they're going to write it with the search in mind, right? They're going to say, okay, how do we attract someone to Oak Island and at the same time represent the responsibilities and the challenges, right? Is what it looks like. So I think we use all that data, right? Code specifies what a town manager can do in a manager council arrangement. Charter specifies that as well. Other town manager councils have job descriptions, they're extant, we just get them. And we give all that to the search committee rather than say, give us a job description.
Yeah, no, we set our parameters consistent with the state.
Well, absolutely.
Generally thinking, generally stating, so you've got, again, two different types of recruiting firms. You've got a retained firm and a contingency firm. Retained firm, again, they get paid a third upfront, and typically what they do for that in addition to beginning to screen for candidates, that they will help you put together, help us put together, position, description. So that's usually part of the package when they, we sit down with them. On the contingency recruiter, typically, they don't do that because they're not getting paid until the back end, and they may or may not successfully bring a candidate forward, so they may or may not get paid ever. So the more work we can do on the front end, I think would really, would give us the leverage that we're looking for to begin this process as just as soon as possible.
So Catherine gave me this, but it's, this is from the league, and they post jobs. I also wanted to call places like Virginia Beach, Wrightsville Beach, I'm trying to think, Rehoboth, Delaware, communities with the beach, if nothing else, it's easier to borrow them right from scratch. So when do we anticipate being ready to launch the search? So we just need three documents. Figure that it has to be drafted, circulated.
People.
Seems like the first step in the process is to coalesce around contingent versus retained firms, or is there some scenario that gives us a hybrid opportunity? But the very first thing we have to do is we have to identify some of those firms and we have to get an RFP out and see what services they can provide for us, help us establish a timeline, help us identify documents that we need to create, documents that they, that they will help us create or input that we need to give. So I think it all, it all starts with identifying who's going to help us and how we're going to decide who they are.
And how much work we collectively want to do or not do. That's another piece of that.
Another piece is who's going to, who's going to be the project manager? I mean, this is, we can all six be a project manager. For the search function, I believe it makes best sense for our mayor to be the project manager with an additional two councilmen, council members on that team for the search committee, with three others, with John, Mayor Pro Tem, as the project manager on the transition. So separating, there's two big tasks ahead of us, and I think we need to bifurcate search and transition committees. Where we meet, get together on a regular basis, we're exchanging information on a regular basis. Nothing's done in the dark, it's fully transparent, but I think the optics of having the mayor lead this function in our community will, will met with very positive response from the residents of our community.
I don't have thin skin, so tear it apart if you don't think that's the right thing to do.
Bob, I've, I've been thinking about this, and I like to refer to the term as a conductor or a facilitator. I am confident that our mayor and all the members of town council are not going to go off on their own and start making decisions, and I'm confident it's going to be a collaborative effort. But we need somebody who can field calls from a search committee, who can make calls to the COG and the league and other towns, who can let council know what documents we need next and get help if we need to be working on those. I mean, there has to be a place for everything to go and everything to come out from, and I also believe that that should be our mayor.
I'm of the opinion the town council is to hire the next town manager. I don't want to yield my authority. I'm not opposed to the mayor taking the lead, but it's five council members are going to vote. I don't want to be, I want, I want all communication. If I'm on a committee, if I'm not on the committee, I want to know everything that's going on, because people around town, we're so concerned about people around town, they're going to ask me point blank, "Why did you hire Mary from Terre Haute, Indiana?" Well, the mayor said she was the best one. I want to know everything that's going on. So if, if a mayor's going to be the lead person, they can be the lead person. Five council members are going to decide who the next town manager is without outside influence.
The virtue of the fact that you vote.
So that, I want, I just want that out in the open at all times through the process, that it's five council members are stuck with this tough task and it's our job to do it.
I should have added that to what I was saying to Bill, so it actually makes perfect sense, and I think as a, as a conductor or a project manager is simply to marshal the process through, but no decision-making authority without full council involved.
And communication back and forth, if, if there's communication, "Oh, the, the search firm told me a week and a half ago that they narrowed it down to three people but only going to send us two." Oh, I didn't know about that. That, I don't want that surprise.
Yeah, and I, I don't either.
Yeah.
And I don't think we're going to be faced with that. If you will allow me just a minute to show you something, tell you something, the town was so good to send Bob and I to municipal government training last week, and I actually learned some things. Very good program put on by the COG and the league. We had some questions they put up on screen and we voted by our phone. One of the questions was, who appoints and dismisses the manager? And the choices were the mayor, the council, council and mayor, or director of human resources. I'm not sure anybody said just the mayor, but a lot of people said council. The answer is the council and the mayor. And it was pointed out to us that even though the mayor doesn't vote, the mayor is an elected physician, and the mayor has the confidence of the people, and so it has to be a collaborative effort, and I think that's what we're suggesting here. The other thing they gave us was this little key takeaways of things that were part of the class, and one of the bullets was the mayor should be a facilitative leader. Again, I think that's exactly what we're talking about here. And so I hope that we'll, I hope that we'll all come together on that and
Well, we can come together. I just, we talk communication. Every time we're in the hallway, we talk communication. This is one time I want communication.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
So if, again, my original suggestion is if we had the mayor and two council members on the search committee, if we agree to that, and Mayor Pro Tem lead the transition committee if we decide we want to move forward with two council members. Granted, we cannot have three council members together at the same time, but we can have the leader speak individually with the two council members that are on the committee.
Well, I think this conversation is the beginning, not the end. I want Councilman Martin in the room because I know he has objections to this procedure, and I think they should be heard. That being said, division of labor makes sense to me, and I read the charter as not being necessarily prescriptive in such a way that being necessarily prescriptive in such a way that the mayor could not be empowered by council to be the facilitator and/or the conductor or go what you will. If council agrees to that, we are conferring that temporary authority on her, and that makes perfect sense to me. But again, I, I want my colleague to have his day, and I will attempt to talk to him about that. But yes, division of labor makes sense here, and yes, the mayor logically, as the chief elected official, right, positioned to do this. So I have no objection, as long as it's framed that way, and we ensure that everyone is fully informed, and I think that's what the council and the craft is asking for.
Just one way in, I am not someone who will struggle. I might get to a point where I'm at the end of the road, and I've got to make a decision, and that may seem like a bold statement to make at some point, but I would rather have influence. If you asked me if I wanted to vote, you would be happy to do that. I would tell you I'm not interested in that. But we do have to, because this has been a struggle for me. In the first few years, just wasn't, I didn't feel as though it was satisfying nor fruitful because we weren't together as a council. And sometimes I didn't hear things till it came out of somebody's mouth, which I think is disrespectful, because I have the responsibility to run the meeting. But we ultimately have to decide what, in our charter says, the official head of the town government. So in state law, they stop at town, city. When you go to Southport, they say their mayor is a ceremonial head. Go to, just as examples, when you go to Caswell, their mayor is their CEO. It says that right on their website. I don't believe that it was unintended that they added the word government after the title. There's a lot of our charter that mirrors the state language. But we, we need to tackle this, and we need to wrestle. So I, I understand what my job is. It's really not fair to ask me to do this job if I don't understand it, and the public needs to understand it as well, as I ask.
I have one comment about, about getting Mark's input. Absolutely, we need to do that, and I'm so sorry that he couldn't, couldn't be here to participate. As a council member, I'm going to insist that that conversation happen in public, though. It's hard for us as a council, for the public, to know that we, we can't meet except in public. As a result, we unfortunately have a lot of triangulation going on where one person won't talk to this person, but they'll talk to somebody else. And by the time it goes around the bend, it's just, it's not, it's not efficient, it's not transparent, it's not productive. So my request is that we do indeed include Mr. Martin, but that we do it in a public form.
Absolutely. That's the only form it can be done in.
Thank you.
But there are two different things here. With all due respect to my colleague, and I regard her as a colleague, as an elected official. If you take, as Councilman Martin has done in his conversations with me at least, and I think with others, he takes a very strict interpretation of the charter. The mayor is suggesting that maybe we ought to reinterpret that. That's, that's a big question that's over here. Conducting this search as the facilitator and having the full authority of council to do that is, in my mind, a reasonable allocation of authority to the mayor. And we can debate the other things later, right? We're in an exigent circumstance. We need a manager, clock's ticking, probably now we're at five months, we need to act, and it makes sense, what Councilman Chulo has said, of a division of labor. And I, I'm not worried at all that the mayor is the facilitator, there are two council people working for him. I have no problem granting her that authority. My argument with Councilman Martin, if you're in the room, would be the mayor has, if you read it, strict construction, right? The mayor has the authority to do ceremonial things, but if council transfers part of the authority, right, or, well, as interpreted, but in effect, we can, we can authorize her to be the facilitator, implying that...
There's nothing in our charter that uses the word ceremonial. It says the official head of the government. If council doesn't agree with that, then we...
Change the charter.
We need to change that. We need to change the charter.
Well, changing the charter is not a simple matter, but what I'm saying is, at least for this exercise, I am supportive, I do want to hear Councilman Martin, and I agree it should be an open session. So if he has concerns, they're expressed, that's all.
So the next open session we have is our town council meeting in February. So if that's John, what you're suggesting, then I'd like to suggest that we make sure that this, that this is on the agenda for the February, town council meeting.
I'd like to move faster than that. Mindful of Councilman Martin's family situation, to the extent he becomes available, we can deal with this question of, of division of labor, and we can get the RFP launched, right, or at least prepare to launch, right? And we can divvy up the division of labor assignments to council. If time permits, we can have a debate about the charter. But I, I feel a sense of urgency to move forward on this, and I have no problem with the proposal on the table. And if the objection is it's not in the written charter, I'm going to say by implication, council can authorize it, and it didn't happen. Boom, and that's the end of it. Unless there are three votes against, I don't believe that's so.
So, so Madam Clerk had polled us about some upcoming dates, a couple hours here and there. Did you get full responses from everybody?
There were not any times that everybody's...
If, well, so then, if possible, we should do it sooner, as soon as possible.
So let's go back to the activities so we can get through this. So, right after this, at what point do we terminate the search process?
So I would defer on that until you've had an opportunity to interview recruiting firms. This is what they do for a living. They'll tell you how long they want to keep that search open. They'll share best practices, and we, we can arbitrarily say 90 days or 120 days, but, you know, sticking to our knitting, right, what we do well, this is what they do well. And I think that when we start this interview process, they'll be able to give you very good guidance on it.
Can we just go back a step, and I will defer to your expertise, Bob? Contingent versus retained, do you have a recommendation? Because that will matter on...
Absolutely. I would say we want to, we, or the committee, would want to interview both, and would like to then report back as to their recommendation may be, we want to use both types. And typically, that is done in an executive search function. They have both retained and contingent recruiters working on that search function. So interviewing them, I would say both, and then come back and make a recommendation, whether we want to go down that path and have both, or if you just, if one rises to the top over the other.
So what I hear you saying is, we really can't make this decision, the search firm will make it for us, when to abandon the search. Will they come back to us and say, we have no candidates that we can present to you, therefore...
Typically, you'll have a contractual agreement with them, and that'll be...
Timeline.
That'll be outlined in that contractual agreement.
They'll tell you how long they're going to post it, have, you know, put it out there. I, I will tell you, John, that in, in 30-plus years, I've never used a contingent firm, I've always used a retained firm. But I think it warrants looking at, as Bob, Bob has suggested, probably if I'm leaning one way or the other, without knowing who's, who's out there, I'm leaning toward a retained firm, just by virtue of the fact of, of what they can provide for us. And I've seen some materials, since David announced his retirement, I've looked around and seen some materials that are retained firm. It's actually an executive municipal search firm.
Okay.
They'll give us their best people in the first 30 days.
Have produced, and so we, there'd be a lot of benefit.
Yeah. I'm certainly leaning...
They'll have resumes and people laying around, so the first 30 days, they'll give us the best they've got.
Yep.
And then they'll start looking for more.
So since the contingent firm doesn't get paid until we actually hire somebody, they are really hungry, and they are really going to be aggressive in trying to put some...
So that's, that's a choice, but again, speeds of the, the salaried matters here. We got to move.
Absolutely.
So what are your thoughts for Plan B? Have one in our back pocket?
We need one.
Meaning, meaning an interim? What do you mean Plan B?
An interim. A, we transition someone from here if they're willing, or hire someone from the outside, but then you've got, you're doing a double search in some respects.
Well, when we get to parsing assignments, that's a transition plan function, and I think we're going to need one. Best case is, we got all of this together in February, then got the bids back, selected someone, it's not, March launch would be optimistic, and then you're on a nine-day clock, right? So that's, you're asking a lot of things to fall into place.
It's a tall mountain.
You'd want to have a plan.
Absolutely. I had the opportunity to talk to both the, the league and the cog last week. In fact, they came up to me and said, how's your search process going? And I said, well, interestingly asked, we're having a retreat next week, we're, you know, bringing things together. We hope to have somebody on board, you know, in short order. And they just looked at me and said, you better think again. So I'll, I'll be happy to say I'm wrong, if I'm wrong, but we need to be prepared for what might be a protracted, protracted search.
Well, again, Debbie's getting resumes already. People are sending in unsolicited resumes. We need to be aware of what's available, but every stone turned over.
So part of the, a big part of the search process is who's going to be the conduit, who's going to receive those resumes. Having resume from another, a town manager in another town being sent into our head of HR, to me, is potentially fraught with, it could be a minefield. So if we had those resumes, or expressions of interest, come to the project lead or conductor, our mayor, that, to me, makes better sense and will help us maintain that Chinese wall of secrecy.
Let's break you, and you have to return to super seven.
Appreciate it, thank you.
And you're welcome.
Should we turn these off? My little dog, my little dog might be going wild.
So council is taking a 10-minute break. We'll be back in 10. So we are back from the break. The next section is a handout. It's a suggested list of guiding principles. So the preface to this is just that the importance of a thoughtfully planned and executed search and transition process, that will yield the next town manager's paramount to the success of our town's future. So if these are the kinds of things we want to see down the road, then we need someone with the skills and abilities that can lead us there. The process is, as I've stated, is time-intensive and complex, and it contains a number of moving parts. Toward this end, there's a set of guiding principles that we put together. These are for your consideration and input. These are not written in stone. This was a start to help frame how we're going to move forward. So if you don't like what you're reading, then change it. So number one is the full active participation of the mayor and town council will drive the process from beginning to end. Anyone have exception there?
I can agree with that.
The second is the search process must be kept highly confidential to protect applicants' professional careers, and particularly those of internal candidates, and that they are treated equitably.
Question, if I could, there is, so how do we do that with respect to confidentiality? So someone who's working internally, do they email, what is that process, what is that communication process like?
So it depends on how far we open it up. We want to keep it just a council process, and, you know, to give updates, we prepare statements about where we are and what we're, kinds of activities that are going on. It's really an opportunity to close ranks, so we're looking at each other, with each other's eyes, you know, and asking for that equitable confidentiality. If there's a likelihood that there's an internal candidate, then I think the question becomes whether staff helps us in this process or not. But we're not there yet, so we won't entertain that. Questions about food?
So follow-up question, not to, to take the stage. So go back to the question that we, or discussion we've had with respect to email privacy. A concern that if an email resume comes in from another town manager, it comes into somebody on staff, the inadvertent opportunity for someone to, someone on staff to, whether they consciously or unconsciously, they happen to look at something that, that violates the Chinese wall of secrecy that we're trying to establish here. So it goes back to the question with respect to email. I know our, Lisa talked about confidentiality, confidentiality of emails, but I think that begs that discussion on, continue that discussion or close it up, is how do we maintain that, that Chinese wall of secrecy with emails?
I think it would be good to get that answered.
I'll just say, mayor, for me, it means that I have my password, and no one else has my password, and I change my password when I need to, or there's a reminder by the system. But for anybody else to have my password, to me, is not, I'm not comfortable with that.
You presented that as a possibility, as a request? Is that something, I'm wondering, that has to be discussed? Or not?
And David, if I could, and to Lisa, and all of staff, I mean, in no way am I saying that there's a problem at all. It's just, if we can eliminate the possibility of there being an issue, and that's why I was, continued to drive on that issue, so now we, that'll remove that loophole, and I know everybody on staff will be relieved as well, that we can cease that conversation.
So John and I have shook hands over co-leading this entire process, and just for the sake of continuity, discussed that communications must be sent to me and John, that's the continuity part, to ensure process remains within the scope of the meeting laws. So please, when you're given responses to whatever we send you, just John and I and the two column.
I'm not sure who has the answer to that. I guess Lisa, you were giving. Is it possible to set up an exclusive portal only for town council and the mayor?
Through the website?
So that we alone would have access to it?
So that you would only have access to it? Yeah, that would be such a separate request, just like anything else, just like an offer. So caution against.
So that doesn't help us? Just a thought. Yeah, well, there's a lot of them.
Good question.
Moving on.
I'm sorry. The answer is no, that would be accessible to the public, even a portal.
Again, what do you all do with the communications once you get it?
We have a conversation.
What happens to the town council members who are wondering what's going on too? Goes back to what I said earlier. I want communication five seconds after everybody else has communication. Just send a communication to, to the mayor and to John, and whatever you do, don't, don't trouble.
No, this is something that would come from John and you would send it back to John, just like we have that scenario.
Let me ask a qualified question again of the clerk. If something is sent to the mayor, let's say in the context of this search, she alone can send it to the entirety of council, correct?
Well, no one else would have it. I just have maybe some of it.
It depends on. So it depends on the content. If it's an email to say, "Hey, is everybody available on Wednesday? We need to have a special meeting," that's a logistics issue. If it's a, "We need to revise our list of qualifications we want for a manager," and then you all discuss, start discussing that via email, I mean, someone could argue that that's a discussion that needs to happen in public at an open meeting.
Are you sure? It's mine. So per Bill's question, if a resume came in or documents related to the search, the mayor can immediately copy council. Council cannot respond or discuss it at the end of a legal meeting, but they can be instantly copied, correct?
It does. Just in the past, we have made copies of resumes and had them here available, and council members have come in to review them rather than sending all that out on the email server.
So per your security concerns, would you be equally concerned if they were distributed instantly to the entirety of council on email?
If they, no, I would be concerned if they were put into the mailboxes.
I would be concerned if they were copied, period. I'm not, I'm fine with email, but I'm concerned with a paper trail.
Well, look, I'm sorry, I didn't know it wasn't clear. Every one copy that was sent in, they weren't going to.
Shall we think further about this?
No, my concern stands.
We want to email. Bill, does that satisfy your concern?
I just do not want to be out of the loop.
Well, it comes in and it's sent to you, you're not out of the loop.
Yeah, but, I mean, and the rest of the picture is, again, we have an HR director who's going to be receiving some resumes. If I was a pretty good town manager in Tupelo, Mississippi, I wouldn't know how to apply for the job, but I would write a letter to HR Director, Town of Oak Island, "Here's my resume." What does she do with resumes? Because she's going to get some.
She's going to whoever's receiving them.
But I mean, we have to have a mechanism.
Yeah, the mechanism, absolutely.
So, I mean, there's just all those little layers. We address the top layer, and then there's six other layers, and we don't address it, and then we wonder how come Bill didn't get an email because we didn't address the fourth and fifth layer.
Because I'm partly irresponsible and.
Well, I hate to hear that about you, but golly, I suffer when you're that way.
I would do my utmost best.
Bill, how can we, is there a way we can modify the process or something? I mean, can we all sign in blood or something? I want to allay your fears because I don't have those fears that we're going to get everything and, but I don't want you to feel that way, that you're not going to get anything or not be a part of the conversation.
Just give me everything.
I mean, I think we've all made that.
From this point going, I've made my point. I've lived my life for the last two years, and I've experienced some things. So just, you've heard me, so going forward, keep me in the loop.
Can we move on?
Yeah.
The Cooperative Collaborative Active Participation of the Mayor and Town Council will produce and execute a great campaign. So basically, it's an all-in. Everyone's going to work to produce that. The town conjunction with mayor will select the applicants to be interviewed. So if we're using a search firm, they'll probably give us the best candidates, they're top-tier, better than everyone, according to what we've written in the job description. But then the question is whether you want to see all of the applications, because that could be arranged too. But I paint in my mind, and this was recommended by, that if there was someone you want to recommend, that person gets recommended, period.
Well, I think part of the process of retaining a search firm will be determining what they do and what we do, and maybe part of the process is if a resume comes in, a letter of interest comes in to, to the HR department, perhaps that immediately gets sent to the search firm. If they're doing the initial screening, then they look and see if they meet our minimum criteria that we've established.
That would be how it would be.
I don't personally care to sit and go through 100 resumes. I would trust whoever we've given our criteria to narrow that down so that someone who is absolutely not qualified doesn't. We don't have to do it, that's fine.
The search firm will give us four or five people thinking number one and number two will be the one that we probably will like, and then they'll tell us, "Wow, we were surprised you picked number four." That happens more than half the time. They'll give us what they think is pretty good, but they'll have their one that they think we will choose, and most of the time it's number two or number three. But you're right, we don't have to read 100 resumes.
That's very simple. The mayor and the town council will then be reaching selected candidates, whilst asking for written feedback using a form. So that interview's over, but there's a form for you to complete before you leave that space, and then give it to John or I.
Can I, can I just go back for a minute? Lisa, I'm going to need you again. So documents that come in relevant to the search, be they resumes or things from a consulting firm, and so they'll come to the mayor, I guess I'm going to be copied on these, the two people have them. Can we lawfully go into executive session so the body of the whole has them instantly, right? So that would, that would be a protocol we could use, Bill, that would put your mind at ease. So let's say the search firm says, at this stage, and we've got X, Y, and Z, the mayor can email everyone on council saying, "The document is here, we're going to have a meeting." We'll need more meetings, but it could be short meetings. Certainly when the resumes come in, the recommended resumes, everyone should be in the room, I believe, and that's protected. We can do that, it's confidential, and we can actually discuss it. So I think we should establish that as a protocol.
See, that's the next layer down. Number six, the mayor and town council will interview each of the selected candidates, and written feedback will be provided. That's wonderful, but do we have to give a notice to the town that we are getting together, all five of us?
It would be a special meeting.
On the spot?
Not there.
Right, I didn't think I was going to talk. You'd have to have a special meeting just with a 48-hours notice, like you do for any other special meeting, and it would be a special meeting just to hold a closed session for any other topics you wanted to put on it.
So we'd be wise to set up, if we could, two or three interviews on Tuesday at 3:00, and 4:00 and 5:00.
We've got to find times where everyone's available. Whether you want to interview all of the same, do the same person at the same time, or want to do it in round six.
So the, hang on a second, not a minute. The, the protocol will be twofold. On routine search correspondence, quotes around routine, copied to you from the mayor, legal. On more substantive things, whether it be resumes to review or interview schedules, right, we're going to have a closed meeting, a special meeting, and everyone will be present, everyone will participate. Right? Does that satisfy your, right? So that's, all six of us are going to need law.
So some of the tasks that we're talking about are pretty far down the line in terms of whether we do this or this, and it's, it's good to talk about them, but I, I think that as we move through the process, we'll see that we know what's coming up next, and so we make it, make a decision about that. Should we all interview them? Yes. But should we interview them as a group or as individuals? I don't know that we really have to know that now. Then there becomes the concern about, okay, where do you interview them? This is a confidential process. Do we bring them into town hall? We have to come here to go into a closed session.
No, I agree with that. There are details that we're looking at that we don't need to, what I'm driving on is security, because I hear that concern from Councilman Kraft, and I can hear the echoes from Councilman Martin. So if everyone is instantly involved with communication, routine or not, you're copied, right? If we get to the point, which we will, of looking at substantive things, be they resumes or recommended finalists, that'll be an actual meeting, a physical meeting, and then the rest of it's a detail we can figure out later on. You want to meet at the Hilton, or we don't have a Hilton, but whatever, right?
Exactly.
Okay.
So if I could just add, so that, that, good point, but that's assuming it's somebody that's local. I mean, we, since we're going to use a national search firm, we could be talking to somebody from, you know, Galveston, Texas, or Rehoboth Beach, so that would be a, would lend itself to doing a virtual.
Yeah, or meet you in Wilmington on River Lawn.
Madam Clerk, a question if I could, with respect to the Freedom of FOIA Act. So are resumes, are they exempt from FOIA?
Yes, they're not public. And just to reiterate, so, I mean, you could change your meeting location, but the beginning of a meeting, special meeting, still has to be public. So just, again, in the past, we have arranged it so that people are not sitting in the room if they're to be interviewed, they're in another location in the building and walk up the back stairwell or something like that.
So at the, number seven, the include, at the conclusion of all interviews, five members of council will vote to select the next town manager with active input from the mayor. And it must include opportunities for stakeholder input and roles agreed upon by the majority members of the elected body.
Is that what we have already addressed?
It's, it's a, it just states a majority.
No, I mean, the plan must include opportunities for stakeholders. What is our definition of stakeholder?
It's actually in another document, I don't know where I have that in. But to Bill's point, we covered that when we talked about the public and staff and anybody else we identified as a stakeholder.
And that would, which would be on the front end, but as to the decision, the vote on who we actually hire, at that point, the stakeholder is other than the six of us, we would not want to include them in the process, in my opinion.
Totally agree.
Correct.
I concur.
So then the next, the alignment of our efforts across the entire process, which includes documents, it's mission imperative to ensure success. So it doesn't make sense if questions are out of line with the job description and who we're looking for and how they're going to be evaluated, and there's actually some good fodder for questions in the draft evaluation that David did.
I think, you know, for me, that means it shouldn't appear that five of us went off into separate rooms and wrote our piece of whatever we're writing and brought it back. We've got to work together on this so that it flows and so that it's cohesive and uniform. Can't be done as one-offs somewhere.
That's the whole part of the common teams. The last is a cohesive, well-documented and communicated, and skillfully executed plan will instill confidence across all stakeholders with an active interest in the search outcome. And those include the citizens of Oak Island, current staff, appointed boards and committees, community and business leaders, the organizations and agencies with whom we work, our county commissioners and state officials. Like it or not, there's just going to be a lot of eyes on us as we navigate the, as we navigate the process. So see any issues that need to be addressed? I know some need to be further explained. Can you live with these?
I can support these. I think these are fairly comprehensive and I don't see anything that gives me pause or concern.
I agree. Very well done.
John?
Yeah, I think we've successfully solved in a two-step process the engagement of council concern that was expressed by Councilman Kraft, and I think when Councilman Martin returns, we'll have, we'll have a fuller discussion. But again, I support a transfer of confirants or facilitation role of the mayor here, and I think we just ratify that and ratify all of these principles as we move forward. We can have a larger discussion about the charter later. We don't have time for that. And it would appear we already have a majority of councilists going to approve this. I do think it will be time-consuming, but I think it's worth the investment in our time to get this right. So when we have a need to meet and have a special meeting and be in the room together, which is part of the frustration we all experience with the Open Public Meeting Act, as expressed by Terry, we're going to do that. That's the other commitment we're making, right? So that everybody is not only aware of it, everybody is physically, mentally participating in the moment. Okay? All right, that's, I'm good. This subject of ratification?
We, we have one chance to get it right.
Yep.
So we've got to be all hands on deck diligent.
So as a lead-in to the section on transition, there's actually, we've reduced the main components of an overall search down to three elements. Each one of those has elements beneath it. Each one of those has elements beneath it. But the executive search, just to differentiate it from a regular search, a special, a specialized recruitment strategy focused on identifying and attracting top-tier candidates for senior enterprise-level leadership roles within an organization. Components may include a profile, a job description, overall strategy and search plan, dissemination strategy and interview strategy and questions, standardized candidate form, comprised of metrics for scoring process, and a well-defined selection process. So, the term also refers to a specialized recruitment service, so we need to talk about executive search, as we have been, which organizations pay to seek out and recruit highly qualified candidates for either specialized or executive positions. And there are search firms who have teams that do nothing but municipal searches. Then the transition, sometimes referred to as outboarding, is the prescribed way in which currently seated leaders effectively contribute to the smooth transition of leadership, in this case, from our current manager to the next. Oftentimes, a transition checklist will be used. So, everything that you would like to see transferred would be listed on this checklist. There could be a link to find it on a hard drive or a jump drive. And to ensure, it also helps to ensure that all the, the data collection and documents are assembled and are centrally accessible to ease transfer of knowledge from later to the next. Go ahead.
So, Councilman Chulo and I have been talking about parsing the responsibilities and the work in this process. I'm, I'm happy to take the lead on transition, but I'll need a council partner to assist me. I think that should be part of this. For those of you who've not gone through it, I've gone through it primarily as a candidate, but also as a manager of searching. So, there's an intricate dance between the current and outgoing, the incoming, and then in this case, council and mayor. So, there's a lot of, of complex interrelationships that are gonna have to be mediated. I think of it this way. The classic book is Stranger in a Strange Land. So, you're learning a new language. You're learning a new history. You're discovering mysteries and truths along the way. You're in a village that you are about to reorganize. So, I'm thinking about it from the mindset of the, the incoming. And leadership, if it does anything, does three things. It sets direction, provides value, and builds the capacity of the organization. So, that, that's what we wanna empower the incoming to do. So, I have a long document list that fits in the agenda. You can see it. And when I find a partner, we'll get in a room and whiteboard this. On the transition side, you know, part of this involves the incoming selected manager's preference, right, for how he or she is introduced. So, there's gonna be a whole messaging concern, theme of which is honoring the past, the outgoing, right? And extolling the future, what we can now do as we move forward and we continue the work David started. There's a whole question of how to introduce the manager, the critical tasks he needs to be made aware of, physical and policy orientation, you know, what we're working on. We need to build a support structure around a new manager. And as discussed earlier, the transition team is gonna need a plan big, for sure. So, on the outgoing side, working with David to gather the documents, working with David and his team to set the stage for success, having all that information available. I think the transition team needs to talk about crossover. If it occurs, how, in what way, under what circumstances? How is the new candidate introduced to the public, in what forum? Key stakeholders, whether it's an open meeting, whether it's some other format, perhaps even electronic. Hi, I'm Jim from Furia. And I think we wanna do that with a sensitivity to what David has done. And I think we wanna treat him with the utmost dignity and make sure that he's celebrated and moving on as a result of retirement and nothing more. So, there's a lot there. I'll, I'll need a partner immediately to start whiteboarding out what the transition plan looks like. And then, for your request of sharing with everyone else, our council and the mayor. So, that's sort of the preliminary lay of the plan here. There's a lot of work to do for transition. I know some of it is underway already, but what we wanna look at is the scope of the transition and the support of that order of transition. So that, if everything went ideally, we'd have a seamless term. So, you could just email me if you're wrong, Sturgis.
Yeah, so I, I was gonna ask a question. Are you seeking volunteers today? I, I wanna make sure that as we start to divvy up teams, if you will, that Mark is part of the conversation.
Sure.
So that
Absolutely.
He has a choice in, in what he works on.
No, that was a think about, not
Yeah, I, I, I wouldn't, I'm hoping we don't have to commit today.
No commitments today, just think about.
The other comment that I would make for, for you all who laid this out is I appreciate seeing this broken into three sections and identified appropriately. And the reference to transition also being called outboarding. In some one-on-one conversations I've had, I've experienced transition being used not only for the outgoing process, but the turnover and the incoming process. And it gets a little confusing about which you're talking about. So, I'm really happy to see that we've identified them in, in three different ways. I think that keeps things in three buckets that are easy to understand.
You done?
Yes, ma'am.
So, onboarding is the next of these. And that's really, it can start, you know, someone can start doing their homework before they arrive. Typically, it's the first day of their being on site. As John alluded, there'd be somebody to welcome them, maybe take them to breakfast. They would get all of their paperwork done and be shown what their resources are at a minimum. But in sum, it's the process through which a new executive would acquire knowledge and orientation needed to be successful in their role. It's the whole purpose of onboarding is to give the new person a, an opportunity to succeed. So, the things that we would do for them would engender success. It often includes an orientation to organizational structure, to culture, vision, mission, values, introductions to staff, community, important community relationships. Just thinking of one off the top of my head as being someone like Pat Sykes or Howie Franklin at the airport. The key organizations being staff at Chamber, a briefings for existing, or, excuse me, ongoing initiatives, obligations and organizational processes. And that likely will come from somebody internally. Onboarding can last anywhere, depending on how savvy the person is and what they believe they need. But it's typically three to six months till they get their sea legs. But it can go as far as 12 months if we saw reason for that. Or it would take it through the first evaluation period. So, if, for instance, they've gone through the evaluation and they're not doing so well, then we can extend the onboarding process to give, to ensure the help is there for whatever they're missing. Or if they do well, which I'm sure they will, then they could just be let go.
I'm sitting here reading this and chomping at the bits to say, day one, I mean, we've all been new employees before. I've been new owner before when new employees came in. I think it would be good if Lisa, Debbie, and Rose met the new town manager and had breakfast, and we stay away from them. Then at 1:00 in the afternoon, that new town manager can meet us people. But at, at first, I think it'd be a relaxing time to say, "These are your, your inner people, and they can break bread." That's my first thought on, on day, on day one.
I like that.
I don't, he, she shouldn't have to be on their toes at 9:00 in the morning trying to impress some guy named Bill or some guy named Bob. It'd be nice if he found out who Rose is, found out who Debbie is, found out who Lisa is. That's my thought there.
A good one. Any other questions for that?
It is a good thought. All that needs to be mapped out, you know, choreographed. So, that's a consideration through the transition slash onboarding, how you start it, where it begins, how it unfolds, so on.
And at that point, I think we, once we've made the selection clearly, the confidentiality can relax a bit.
With respect to the first two components, the search and the transition function, so that'll be led by council, I think the onboarding function, you know, that actually, that town clerk, town manager can begin that process now, start putting together, you know, knowledge transfer, documentation, you know, what, what does a new town manager, what do they need to know? And begin to build checklists of important things. We can certainly swoop, not swoop, but we can be part of that process, but I think that they could start that process literally today.
I think it is up and running.
Before Rose tells us to shut up, David, you've listened all morning. Is there anything we're overlooking? I didn't know you sat there for three hours, and I didn't know if you were biting your tongue or smiling, so I wanted, I wanted to give you a chance to
Look at those fools.
To clarify anything that you wanted to. Thanks, buddy.
So, in that vein, just, if you're willing to share, thinking back to your transition to the management's job, what, if there was one, what is it that you, you most valued and what is it that you didn't get?
So, my transition was clean and calm, but Rachel was working towards too much at that time. I came in after the fact that we already done two teams, nine, ten years. So, it wasn't just finding a boss. We also got our, our, you know, we were the councilmen. And then after we were paid a lot of shit, I don't, I'm sure I was paid a lot of shit. I didn't wanna do something that hurt us. We didn't have a very big, we had already run two teams. And several rooms in the board, I don't know if it's a terrible, terrible thing, but I believe there was a guy who was trying to get all of our whacks. So, it was pretty rough, so we had to leave. So, the, 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 by my margins, at the time, I mean, what a town it is, you know, we're new, here's the new, and so I always sort of feel we've done, and it was too far to go. There's other things we don't understand, they were personally, there's other things that I can't even handle. A lot of things that we had sort of been a little down ago, that was time to do those and to retire and to do my life. But on the transition side, I can be, but I knew we were already in town on the front of the building, because I've been here long enough to know what it's like to be here. But I needed to know we were the people. But I can't, this one, this is the one that this person comes in, wanting to actually hire a person, and then you have to come in, there's, and then go out and do this for a couple, and then ask some questions about things. And to be a resident, and that person's gonna have a, 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 many things. There's a lot for this town, and also a lot of people here have to try, and so I think it's, it's, for the transition period for us, that is one of the transitions we need to be, and the period of
Thank you, David. I do wanna see that note. No.
It's all right.
Well, do leave the next president a note of your own.
Kinda like when the outgoing president leaves a note to the incoming president.
Starts with an explanation or a few questions.
Sorry, we can't press for much, but
I guess this is the last, hello. There's not a corresponding handout for this one.
You did well preparing all this.
Good job.
Great job.
There's one?
Yeah, that's it. And then there's more. I bring it in, questions one every time. So, this is basically just saying that a well-planned transition process can accelerate the onboarding of a new manager and aid in ensuring his or her success, which is really all it's about. You can accelerate and ensure, to the degree possible, that this person is gonna succeed. You want them to. You've already invested a boatload of money. So, this is an activity. What are your initial thoughts about the manager transition process? And I'll just try to capture these on
Terry said it, said a whole book for it when she said, "We get one shot." It's, it's a hard It's a hard process, and we have to do our due diligence, and everybody has to think their way through every aspect of it, but we get one shot. Or if we don't do it right, then we get another shot in six months.
I think John, I think John mentioned several key points when he talked about leading the transition process, and that includes a checklist of any number of items. And, you know, in addition to a checklist, I would hope that we would formulate a timeline to work by, because if we get too far down the road without starting to check things off our list, we're not going to end up with a product that we're happy with.
Yeah, I think we need a map. I didn't want to presume to be the repository of all knowledge about that. That's why, at some point, we'll have a partner. Well, I'm following Bob's recommended design. I think it makes sense, you know, so that we have different people working on different things, but all are sharing. And, you know, transition is a critical time. A lot will depend on, not only the plan that's in place, but also frankly, on candidate. Candidate embraces the transition plan. If the candidate comes in with a clear sense of what they need, right, but don't know what they asked for, so it's about that relationship. And I, it's hard to speculate because we don't have a candidate, but some candidates thrive in transition, some struggle. I've seen it both ways. Frankly, only speaking from personal experience, I never took a job where I didn't come in with a transition plan. I never knew things about the organization, and the challenges were. I had a feel for key personnel, and, you know, I'm assuming our candidate from the National Search is going to come in with that. So that will make life a lot easier. And one of the things that, you know, you would want to do is communicate with the selected candidate, and I would be stunned if they didn't already have that in their head or on paper. And you can tell just from the questions they're going to ask you, what kind of candidate they're going to be, so.
If I recall, Otto Parking had been watching our town council meetings for two or three months before we ever met Jim Barton. So they're going, once they decide they want to be considered, they're going to do their homework on us.
So then you align your plan to their, you know, it's a little bit of both.
I would like, there's one not fun job that we need to address real quick, and I would like to volunteer Bob and I to contact the National Search firms and get that started.
So as soon as we decide on what the committees, who's going to be on what committee, absolutely agree. So, you know, and let's think about, like, where can we add the most value, right? Play to our strengths. You know, what's our background, you know, analytical perspective? I mean, that, to me, that's one of my strengths. I think it's Councilman Martin's strength, you know, interpersonal skills and, you know, plays to your strengths, though, I believe, and Terry certainly plays to your strengths. So whatever the makeup of it looks like is, begins, that would be one of the first tasks, I believe, they would, the Search Committee would do.
Everybody says Bill used to practice law. Bill also owned three staffing firms, and I know, I know that game. Yeah. And I was a pretty good baseball player, but that's a whole other story.
Any more open thoughts about the manager transition?
Lot of work.
It's a lot of work. So with that, and we don't have to do it right now, I know John has a list. I encourage you to crosswalk it with, Terry has a list, Bob has a list, so to crosswalk.
Yeah. Every one of the lists.
And everyone will see what everyone else is doing. It is 11:53. We're not supposed to break.
It's okay for a head extension, ahead of schedule.
Do you want to stay with your 45-minute break, or you want to come back?
Rose has all kinds of food right there. 45? Got a plate?
Yeah. I guess we just start.
Yeah, you have a schedule.
Yeah, lunch break.
We're ahead of schedule.
You want to do the motion?
Yeah, you don't need to motion to recess.
Okay, it's recess.
Oh, it's officially recessed.
Took me 40 years growing into my ears.
Okay, back from lunch. 4:02. This afternoon, agenda says that we will shift to goals and targets, and we'll look at this in three ways. So we'll look at the current projects underway, and we're actually using the FY 2223 priority documents for that. And then we'll look at the documents that, projects we can complete in the fiscal year, and then look at longer-range projects. So that's kind of how we're going to approach it. There we go. So we'll start with, they're not in linear order, but because it comes next in the packet, we'll start with priority two, Parks and Recreation. Again, I'm using the light bulb approach to indicate where we have, I did the, I had these in there. It's morning. All right, sorry. But some of the objectives have, are incomplete, some of them, I'm not sure that they were even started. David, you could give some feedback on that, if you will. But the first one, Objective 2.1, is about conducting a study, a survey, if you will, of OKI citizens to determine the needs of departments, programs, services, and facilities. I know there was a very small survey done. I'm not sure it was particularly useful. It certainly wasn't shared with council. We were hoping to get data that would support the programs that we offer or identify programs we should be offering. So I marked this one as a yellow because it hadn't met all of the goals. And this is for council to decide whether they want to continue on with these or they want to retire them. This is two years ago, so that's part of our decision process. And then Objective 2.2 is related to the study results, translating it into a prioritized list of facility needs. And I don't think that's happened. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Where are we on that?
No, none of those.
RFP. None of those happened because we couldn't come to some kind of understanding of what we actually did longer, where we were going, and what we wanted to do.
Okay.
The survey that Heather did, the small one that she did out of the rec center, you're right, it didn't provide a whole lot of detail, and it's something that they're going to have to do again for the 20, I think it's 2025, five-year plan for the rec center, getting ready to come up, too.
They're pressing.
So they will have to, so they will have to do something there, sure. Getting out the RFPs, I like council giving direction, we only had one firm submit RFP back for proposal back.
It's up to the rec center.
That's for the rec or community building or provide services. And we just need a date to bring that to you, for you to have that person come in. They had sent some dates where they were available. We haven't been able to regularly work a date out. But no, they're still available, and they can give us dates. Next month, they're usually available about one day a month, I mean, one day a week during that month.
So it would be a town council meeting, it'd be?
It'll be sort of like we did for the others. You'd have a, since it's only one vendor, I would say you'd have a special meeting like this. They would come in, make their presentation to council of the services they provide and what they could do and what their vision was, everything that you outlaid in the RFP, and then you would make your decision if that's what you would like, or would you like to look elsewhere, or that's where anybody else would be able to apply. For that, we're there with that one. And we're also, the same way with the land use management plan, we had four people submit. There was really only two that met all the criteria that y'all laid out, so we need to have y'all meet, you know, one of them at a time as well, for y'all to decide if you would like to retain the services of one of those people also, so that's still out there.
Can you tell us what process the town uses to advertise these kind of things? Where is it published? Do you call and have conversations with design firms and encourage them to submit an RFP? What extent do we go to to get it out there? It's really concerning to me that on something with as large a magnitude as the rec center and the comprehensive land use plan, that we have such poor response. There's any number of large architectural firms in the Wilmington area, and the fact that they're not responding gives me concern.
Well, Land Use Plan contacted ones from the Cog that are, I believe Ms. Cali has a form or a sheet that says these are the vendors that are registered. So usually we reach out and contact those. The rec Heather would have reached out to people and did the same thing with them, notifying them that we're submitting or getting ready to release RFPs. And then she contacted some of the other municipalities that had them used lately. Another was one, was it Ocean Isle? Where they had one that Bob sent me and said, have we reached out to this person? We haven't. If council wants to open it back up, we'd reach out to that person, but since they were already closed, we didn't reach back out.
I think we're missing the mark on how we're setting up our projects for success. And at the request of the mayor, some time ago, it might have been even a year ago, I provided for you an anatomy of how a capital project works. And we consistently keep getting the cart before the horse and trying to figure out what we're doing when we haven't had a professional come in and facilitate that conversation and do a feasibility study and help us do some strategic planning. The survey that was put out for the rec center is not adequate to determine those, those, make those, help us make those decisions. I'm not, I'm not satisfied with one firm. I'm happy to interview them, but that's not going to get us where we need to be. So I think we need to look at the whole process. The other thing is, is if we received four RFPs for the comprehensive land use plan, I want to see all four of them. Maybe two of them are not worth having, but I think council needs to see what the submittals are that we're receiving before we start to make decisions about who we include in the process. But I'm really concerned fundamentally about how we're advertising and how we're getting this information out there for people to respond to.
I agree, Terry. David, can we, can we get them in, that one company? Can we, let's get, sooner rather. And then follow up on what Bob said, and Terry said, reach out to the Ocean Isle group and then see what else we can, we can do, but we've got to start. Yeah.
And Bill, I think part of the discussion has to be, you know, we've used the language, rec center here. The Ocean Isle project was a community center. They're two vastly different products, so we've got to make a decision, are we going to do one of each? Are we going to try to somehow combine those into one facility? But we're just not following the logical steps of the anatomy of a capital project. So we're not succeeding.
That's where the RFP with council, there were three options they had in front of them, one of these is laid out. Council couldn't come to a decision on that, so the RFP says, we need you to look at option A, option B, and option C, to make recommendations about this.
So is what I'm hearing that we want to maintain Parks and Recreation, priority two, with the two objectives that are here? Do we want to alter that in any way? Are we bringing that forward as a priority? Probably could be.
I always want it to be a priority, and Terry knows more about this than I do, because I'm sitting here thinking, we need to get the RFP people in front of us and talk to them, but if we only have one, we need to find some more. But we need to get going. We're two years into thinking we're moving forward and we're at a standstill, and maybe it's council's fault, but we're at a standstill.
But I'm also not sure, and David, correct me, I'm not sure that Oak Island is to do everything in Objective 2.1. If I'm reading into that correctly, that's
That was some of the RFP.
That's what the RFP was all about. So this needs to be reworded at a minimum to include the RFP, because that's an outcome.
Who else have comments made earlier about people are watching this? Some of the firms that reached out to us and talked to us, that they had been watching the council, and the council's non-decisionary, before they wanted to go with all three steps, that's a reason why they didn't submit. But there is people that watch us, and we do need to sort of streamline, sort of fine line things as we do, to make sure that what we're asking for, everybody's aware of it. And there is, I mean, we put it online, there's a state RFP site that we could join and get onto, I don't think I remember up there, but there is other ways to get the information.
Yeah, sometimes it's just a, it's just a personal phone call to the, to the principal, the principal of the company. You know, there are, there are firms in Wilmington who I've worked with on projects of a similar nature, and so we're missing an opportunity if we don't reach out to those folks and see if they're interested in helping us.
And to add to that, David, I think that the, I mean, if we know there are firms that have watched previous town council videos and they're suspect about the commitment, you know, reassuring them about current council's commitment to this is significant and is a top priority, maybe ask them to rethink their participation.
I mean, you can always, we can always react and, and add to the document that we currently have and streamline it some, so something council will want to do.
I just know it's difficult to listen to one vendor without having anything to compare it to.
You're right.
Yeah. It'd be good to have two or three.
It would. So can we take another look at the RFP?
Oh, yes, ma'am. We can bring him back if there is.
So Mayor, when I look at, like, Objective 2.1, it's very well stated, but the way it reads is that the town is going to conduct a study.
Because that was the plan two years ago.
Yeah, and the town's not going to conduct the study, that the architectural engineering design firm is going to conduct the study, and they're facilitated, led meetings, designed to solicit the information that we're looking at.
Community engagement.
It's beyond our wheelhouse to try to do those things.
Well, that's how we got to the RFP, because this didn't get us what we needed.
It doesn't need to change it to say that part, for the new, for the new one.
Yes, so we do want this.
But the one company that is willing to talk to us, I want to keep them in the game, yeah.
Yeah, we certainly should listen to them.
Yeah.
But I think the fundamental question here is beyond whether But I think the fundamental question here is, um, beyond whether or not our advertising process is as effective as it could be, which I grant you is always a question. We should, we should be looking at that. But the naked truth of the matter is council did not make a decision. There were multiple options. So if that scared firms off, probably because of the scope and the indecision. Uh, I'll add to that, that there was a very broad and nonspecific discussion about finance, right? And beyond that, there was an original architectural scheme which came back from management, which was rejected by everyone. So we remain at ground zero. Seems to me if we really wanted to move forward as a council, we should decide, are we building a rec center? Are we building a community center? Are we building both? Um, that would give more direction to the RFP. Right now, we're saying, we don't know what we want to do. Go figure out three different options and come back to us.
Would the RFP company not direct us one direction or the other as to what's most feasible?
They were going to assess them, but what I'm, what I'm arguing is if we had a direction, if we had a clear vision, we would probably have more vendors and more success, right? We want to build a community center, period. Or we want to build a combination or an unusual hybrid.
Multi-use.
Yeah, okay. Or we want to build a rec center in the traditional sense.
People went further and asked me what they were doing to get this current project. We actually didn't fly off. It is, like I said, we streamlined it or if we don't, we leave it out there the way it is. Um, I think just to renew interest of the council going forward and be positive on it and maybe other avenues for advertisements and things like that. Have Heather reach back out to the companies that have provided services in adjacent communities. See about utilizing them as well. And when they come in, I mean, they're, they've already looked at the adjacent communities, what they have and when they did the last dance of services they provide and the programs they provide, and then they start looking at what we provide and they come up with a plan all together on what we need to provide and what we sustainably be able to provide. It's a process and we, we really didn't know enough until we began to go through it.
I agree.
And before we had a three million dollar project, we had three million dollar budget. The engineer, this is what we'd like in it, that's a box building, three million dollars. Council said, that's not what we want. So we, we're here where we're at.
So that's another very good point. There needs to be some internal discussion and decision, and internal, I mean, to, to town about how much money are we talking about? Because architects and designers have the amazing ability to design to the amount of money you tell them you have. And if you tell them you have $20 million, they're going to spend every bit of it. Um, we don't want to have somebody design a $20 million building if we're only talking, we got $5 million. I mean, how much money we decide we have to spend is going to point us in the direction, more the direction we need to go.
But I think in part, the question that needs to be answered is how much of our, what we have in reserve, um, are we comfortable paring down and using? Um, there's a number of creative options certainly for a new building, including grants. Um, there are just so many unknowns in this at this time. And I think this just needs to be refashioned. It's, it's a good effort, but the question is in terms of timing and when we're going to do it. Um, I don't know that we want to start this, this fall when we clearly have some other major, um, things on our plate.
Well, the question, timing, I'm, I'm going to reiterate what I just said. We need to make a decision here, folks. It's really that simple. Um, and yet it's that complex. So we, in effect, from where I'm sitting, my perspective on this is we rejected an upgrade to the current facility. We take that off the table. Are we building a community center, a rec center? And what are we doing with the old property? Once we get that clear, then we could talk about the budget, at least in tentative terms, whether or not we're bonding it, whether or not we're taking it out of reserve, how much, what's the limit. Right now, we're all over the road. And until we make a decision, we have a new council with new perspective, get to revisit the question. And again, Mark's not here. Mark was championing a two-building solution. Build a community center, build a rec center, make them both smaller, you know? Um, that was out there. There was no agreement on that. There's no agreement on, um, real hard cost to build new. So we just went all over the road. Anybody watching us would say, I don't know, these people are, they don't know what they want, right? So I don't want to become involved in this, right? Because there's no clarity. And I'm, I'm all for a decision, even if I don't like it. At least we have a decision, we have a direction, right? And.
So you're thinking we.
We have a yes.
Let me finish.
Okay.
And we all do expect from the mayor, we have the option to defer on this because we have multiple other projects. We spent a million dollars on paving, we're about to list prior, you know? Is this an imperative? That's my first question. Is this something we have to deal with now? And if it is, okay, let's make a decision. Looking at all of the potential options, and there are options, let's make a decision. What is it that we want? And then we can say, okay, what is it we're willing to pay for what we want? And we can get professional advice. Without that, I don't, I don't know how we proceed, right? And I'm okay, I'm, I'm open to all the options because there's so much that I can foresee already in terms of spending, in terms of debt, in terms of leverage, in terms of emergent other needs, right? If we're going to prioritize the rec center, then we need to make a clear decision. This is what we want. Here's what we think we're prepared to pay for it. And then we can get in, later on, are we bonding it and taking it from reserve? Right now, if you ask me, what's the decision on the rec center? I would say I have no idea. I don't know. Where is council going? Not clear. And that's true, right? So I think the choice is defer on it or bring it back and get clarity, get a solution.
So my understanding, and I could be wrong, correct me please if I am, that the firm that we ultimately bring in, or a firm that's going to give us the RFP, would go through a series of community engagement meetings, meeting with staff, meeting with council. Um, they go to do their homework and then they come back and they provide options to us, right? So for $5 million, this is what you can get, or 10 million or 12, um, this is what the community wants, this is what council and staff wants. We put it all together. And then at that point, I think we can make a decision about how much we want to spend. Do we want a community center? Do you want a hybrid? Do we want a new recreation center? I think it'd be, personally think it'd be premature for us to make that decision because I don't think it'd be an informed decision, would just kind of be a knee-jerk reaction more than anything else.
And that's pretty much your feasibility. That would be your feasibility study. Not to be confused with programming the building because that's a, that's a, the next, that's another step is where you decide what spaces you need and how big they need to be and who all's going to be able to use them. So I, I agree, we need to, to get some information to be able to answer these questions. My concern is that we're relying on one firm who, to, to give us, to give us a dog and pony show when, I mean, it'd be nice if we had at least two. And it doesn't mean that this company, uh, is necessarily going to be the designer. That's not always the case either.
That's the way the RFP was done.
My thoughts, we've been telling the people of Oak Island for two years that we were trying to get a new rec center figured out. So I don't want to bring that on hold. I don't know what else we're going to talk about as far as the priorities and money spending, but for two years, we've been telling the people of Oak Island, we're working on a new rec center. So I want to get that off square one. And if we need two or three companies to come in and talk to us, or whatever we need, or if we need to make the first opinion decision that we want a rec center or that we want a rec center having a community center, if we need to make that decision, we need to kick it around and make that decision. If we need to wait for the RFP people to tell us what's most feasible, whatever we need to do to get going. Uh, for two years, we've been telling people out on the street, it's coming. And we're not any closer. So I want to get closer. And we probably passed up our golden opportunity for a, a pretty good loan at the bank.
We did. That ship has sailed.
Yeah. But here we are and it's January of 2024, so I, I want to figure out what we need to do, uh, to get started. And if we need to make that decision on, on it, then we need to just sit down and come up with our answer.
Well, again, we don't have everyone here. If we're focused only on a rec center, right? Um, and we get the benefit of the one company that has looked at some options, we hear that, and we can then determine how we want to go from there, right? That's at least a, a very small first step. Remember, if you overlay managerial search and all the other goals that are going to come out of this, an intensive rec centered development surge, right? There's only so much bandwidth, trust me on this. You've been doing this for a while. If you have 15 goals, you're not going to accomplish 15. I agree with you, Bill. But let's get an answer. Let's see if council can say it's a rec center you want and only a rec center at this point, right? And have initial options for one company and go out and get other options if we're clear.
Do you think we can make that decision without talking to the first or second RFP company?
No, I think we wait to hear from them and then we make a decision.
I do too.
I mean, we're still sitting on too many options, right?
And to answer, to address your first major dilemma, we have a town manager search, which is going to be all encompassing. Uh, the town manager search is a, I hope, six-month heavy cross barrel, uh, hopefully. The rec center RFP is three or four months initiate. So I don't want us to get scared away, and I understand that, that too much at one time is too much at one time. Maybe it won't be. I just want to get started on the rec center.
So this needs to be adjusted. We should take another look at the RFP and find vendors. Those are like a series of tasks at this point.
So can we, I think what we've heard, what I think I've heard, if you all will tell me if you, in agreement is that as soon as possible, we're going to get this company scheduled to come in here. If they're available one day a week, surely sooner rather than later, we can find a day. Uh, we're going to, going to review the RFP that went out for these services and then I think we can talk about a strategy to get, uh, see if we can get a little better response to that and maybe get one or two other folks who can come in and then we have ideas to balance and say, well, they seem really out in left field. These folks seem more in sync with what we're thinking.
That's a robust.
Nice to have that option.
That's a good robust.
Well, and they're going to tell us what's feasible.
I'll just ask Heather to go ahead and send out the, the RFP packages and the submitted, the one that we received out of the council so you can see what the pre and the post is.
Thank you.
And then we can get, and she's going to call them and get a date or some dates and then get that back in front of them.
And hopefully get one or two other companies in the meantime.
I think they're out of, they're out of Florida. Their sports industry, I believe, I mean, they're the.
Okay.
They're the main one who does them all.
We, we have rec center designers in Wilmington if we can interest them, and, and we have some in Chapel Hill and Raleigh. If we can interest them in coming to talk to us, if, if they were one of the ones who looked and said, I don't think I want to get involved in that, maybe we can clarify some of that, reassure them and encourage them to participate.
They need to see that we're serious and not just getting tired.
Absolutely. That, and it might help to streamline communications as well so that they don't feel they're talking to everyone, but, um, not to put it on you, Terry, but you talk, they talk.
I mean, I'm happy to, I'm happy to make calls, just kind of introducing the project, talk to some of the, the principals and, you know, would you entertain looking at our RFP and tell us if you could, you know, want to participate with us? I'm happy to do that.
That's right up your alley. That'd be perfect.
You have a plan?
John, you all right?
It's fine. That's it. It's the first step that's measured and we're in control of it. And I guess hopefully after we talk to the first and only at this point, we'll be in a better position to think about what the options are as they see it, as we see it. And we can decide how important this is for us to go forward with it. Get a better measure of how complex it could be and see what they come back with.
And, and we might get lucky. This, this one firm who's responded, they might check every box for what the information we feel like we need to get.
Yeah, definitely need to hear them. I agree with you, Phil. That, that will prompt, inevitably prompt another council discussion. And so that will help us narrow some of these options and still honor our, we've told people we're looking seriously at this. It's been a long and tortured process that hasn't produced anything. If nothing else, if we came back with, okay, we've talked to one vendor, we're looking for others, uh, we're going to reexamine the solutions that were presented initially, we're able to winnow some of these out, you know, that's, that's at least progress. Right now, we're, we're just, frankly, we're dead in the water. So something needs to happen.
Landering, is that right?
Drowning, drowning in the desert.
It, it's good to lay it on the table and have a, have a game plan.
Are we ready to move on?
Mm-hmm.
So moving to priority three, beach protection and preservation. Excuse me. Um, we have completed objective 3.1, 3.2, 3.3, and 3.4. As written, the only one that didn't, uh, get done, but is on, um, I think it was yours, Bob, as a priority, uh, is this shoreline preservation commission. So to look more broadly at both shorelines. Um, if that's something that I would push this through the summer and the fall when we've got our, um, we know what we're doing with the search and hopefully have gotten a good bit of that behind us, then this is certainly something we can pick up. But I don't know what, uh, the, um, sense is for council for developing such a commission.
I know for the, uh, the project that you have coming up, Muffet Nickel, their activities will be, um, sort of picked up around August all the way through till June of next year with the, um, uh, sand project, 24, 25. They would be probably available to work on anything else, but during that time, Beth and Dawn will be working on that mainly.
And we also have feedback of some sort coming from Army Corps of Engineers.
So they sent us, we had our meeting with them. They sent us their priority list of what information they're wanting. Uh, Lisa and I went through a lot of that, uh, April yesterday, Monday, I reckon. Um, we went through that and started prioritizing what Muffet Nickel has already done that we can provide to them. Um, so we can, we have a lot of that information and Courtney's got first floor elevation certificates and those kinds of things. So I think we're okay with the core right now. The second part that they're wanting, um, is going to take us some time to be able to get. So if anybody has any pictures of the beach after hurricanes or before hurricanes, the corps is looking for them, um, to see any kind of history shots. But we'll, we'll work simultaneously with them, but they'll be sending us a list of dates also that they want to have that second meeting. So we need to get that scheduled.
The West End or something other than the West End?
Everything.
Okay. I know the folks on the West have.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, they have.
So they're, they're, they're wanting anything, any kind of photos, pre and post storms. If you have a picture of your house before and after, some they can document besides just shoreline pictures that are just repeated where they don't have anything prior or post. So Bill's right about that. Those are the things that we were working on, but this other thing is something sort of different from that, um, if you want to talk about that.
Commission.
Yeah, let me, if I could, just kind of share my thought process. So, uh, and it really comes into, um, significant importance. So, uh, and it really comes into, um, significant importance with David's retirement. Um, as we start the search process for a new town manager, ideally it's somebody who, who has beach management experience. But if we entertain potential candidates who don't, they live inland or another state, um, I think it's critical and crucial for us to, uh, move very quickly and form this shoreline protection commission. Uh, reaching out to the community, we've got some extremely, um, intelligent individuals with the kind of background in, uh, beach management. We've got, uh, that, two folks that come to mind immediately, you know, undergrad degree in geology, graduate degree in geology, and wrote their graduate thesis on beach, beach management. Um, those kinds of individuals can serve as kind of our guiding light, um, to help collectively, staff and council, um, to help make sure that we understand the implications of all the shorelines, uh, not necessarily just the beach. But with David's Exodus, if we bring on somebody who doesn't have beach experience, this commission could play an integral part of helping onboard, uh, the new town manager.
So you're wanting an ad hoc committee, so to speak?
Mm-hmm, I am.
So are we talking like ad hoc or standing?
I mean, I would prefer a standing. Um, not sure what the implication is, uh, with respect to our charter, if there's a difference in a commission and a, and a committee. Um, but it sure would be nice if we could have this group that just stays on like the other boards and committees that we have.
I agree 100% and I would encourage and support such a group. Um, and, and there is more, we've recognized there's more to be done. Certainly our beach is a big concern. But there's also a lot of stuff on the waterway, on the canals. Um, and we need, we need someone like our environmental advisory committee, how they act to interact with the North Carolina Coastal Federation and help us research ways to get homeowners involved in protecting their property and those kinds of things. So it's, point's been made today, there's only so much we can do. We only have so much bandwidth. I think we need to tap into the resources that we have available to us and take advantage of it.
And Lisa, wasn't there a beach and inlet committee or something? What was the name of it?
We had a beach and inlet committee and then it was an ad hoc, um, beach and erosion committee.
Were they assigned tasks or was it for a duration of time?
The first one was assigned tasks to be a steward committee and then it was the second one.
The second one was the one, three or four years ago.
I think, uh, I think talking about, uh, perhaps a new committee or board or commission or whatever the correct term is. Um, and I don't want to jump ahead too far in the agenda, maybe this is coming up. But it, it causes us to realize that we need to look at our boards, our appointed boards and committees as a whole, okay? They've got to have direction. They've, they've got to know what they're supposed to be doing. And, um, so I know that some committees, I know that some committees in the past have failed. Um, and I would put that back on council to make sure that we're responsible in giving them, you know, direction.
I was, I was going to bring that up and thank you for bringing that up. All the committees, uh, are wondering, wondering what their authorities are and wondering what they're supposed to be doing for the town. And as Bob said, there's some quality people here in town with doctorates in geology and, and what have you. Once we're able to utilize those people, we need to turn them loose with some authority to, uh, bring some serious information back to us. Uh, the environmental committee wonders what, what the town wants from them. Uh, so yes, uh, I'm in favor of the, the committees, but boy, I want the understanding to be better.
Yeah, I would suggest semantics are important here. Commission sounds like some other worldly things. Just call it a committee of, I think Terry's put her finger on, on one of the key issues, which is how are committees constituted? What is the scope of their authority and responsibility? And if they're, as I believe they should be purely advisory, they make recommendations. The council is free to reject or accept or table. We've had a long history and I will say it's a checkered history of committees, right? I served on beach and inlet and we presented recommendations to council and dissolved committee, couldn't let the recommendation. So that tends to dis, right? People are disinclined to serve on committees and spend that kind of time and then have people reject not only the report, but the committee. So we should be clear about what these folks are doing, how they get there, how long they serve. There's, there's a whole lot of work that needs to be done around that. I'm not opposed to having a panel of citizens with expertise, as opposed to agendas with expertise, making recommendations to improve our shoreline. That's a great idea. But the larger question is how the committees interface with council, what their role is, and, and how they function, right? All of that is, I know, coming ahead of us things, but I'll just say that as I support the idea that Bob's advancing. That's a great idea. Been there on that committee and can say it's bitterly disappointing. We had a sand committee before we committed a sand project, which unfortunately politicized by council, blew up. So we've been down this road before and it's not, it's not just creating another committee, but it's the overall structure of getting committees that are functional and healthy and they're, you know, and it goes both ways. They need to understand that they're making recommendations to us. You're going to find out very shortly or the course of the year, two years, you're going to make decisions that are unpopular. There are people who elected you. That's just part of it. So they need to understand not every recommendation they send to us is going to be accepted or not, you know, not modified in any way. That's, that's unlikely to be the case. So that being said, I support the committee. Um, but I support Terry's larger effort to sort of really clarify how this is working or how it should work.
It was on Bill's list as well, the realignment of committees and I've been also working on that.
I think a council member, and I know we're spread too thin. I think a council member should be present at those advisory meetings.
As a liaison?
As a liaison or as a answer person, bounce it off. No, please don't bring that to us. We've looked at that three different times and we've said no before. Uh, so they won't be wasting their time. A council member kind of knows what the council's thinking. And I know we're spread thin, but that's probably how a commission or committee or whatever would, would work.
That's one thing, but the system has to get realigned. Clear roles and responsibilities, clear lines of communication. Um, you know, how, how does the whole elected appointed body line up? Um, where do directions come from, et cetera? So it's a broken system. Um, and, uh, I've changed the, both the application, the process for how long council has to view applicants, um, and even changed some of the rules and procedure around code of ethics, et cetera. But it doesn't, it doesn't help. So we can collect more information about the applicants. But it doesn't help if that's not the basis on which they're chosen. They're chosen for other motivations or reasons. Um, so we just.
Three people dropped off the environmental committee and the reason they dropped off was, we don't think we're being heard.
Yeah, I know.
We're just, we're talking environmental issues around, around the water cooler. And, uh, so I want them to have a strong voice. But the only way to have a strong voice is if a council member is there to say, to help direct them.
Well, I, I think there are some inherent issues there. I don't, I don't want to prolong this discussion. I think when we get to, I don't know if I can call it committee reform or committee restructure, we can take that up. Council members, um, can be unduly influential if you want an impartial committee looking at data. We are also spread too thin and our council is repeatedly recommended, repeatedly recommended we not do that. Um, and it's very tricky because you don't represent council. You, you represent one vote, you know. So I, I want to set that question over there. I think the, the clear and compelling need is we need to reorganize the committee structure. Another way to do that is to have, give them the opportunity to report, we ought to, in public to council, have a steady predictable set of minutes, um, to invite the chair. You know, there, there are other ways to set aside some meetings where council members are present. I'm fine with that. But, you know, we've had liaisons in the past and sometimes it gets, it tends to distort the view, right? Because the council member goes native and he ends up promoting something that, you know, we need to be careful. Caution weight's there.
And it came across to me, and I do not disagree with what you're saying. It may not be bad to have a council member available on, uh, for a telephone call to pass something by them. Have their liaison, so to speak, without asking Bob or Terry for somebody to go to a two hour meeting. Just be available to bounce something off of them.
So John and I've had this discussion, Bill and I've had this discussion. Bill and I are both proponents of the liaison program. But to John's point, it must be structured right. There must be a clear definition of how the liaison operates, where they don't cross the line. You know, they don't participate in the meeting. They don't, uh, try to sway the committee or the board one way or the other. They're simply there as a conduit for that board for the exchange of information. And I believe that, uh, Bill and I talked about working on it together. I believe that we can present a compelling case to show how it can be successful uh, if people do what they're supposed to do in the way it's outlined.
We can get there.
So before we move off this topic, if I could, so I'm a very logical sequential thinker, right? A to B to C. And in this case, I'm going to propose, um, instead of going A to B to C, we go from A to C and C is, um, beginning a shoreline protection committee. And maybe we put it on the February agenda to talk about, see if we can get approval for it. My, I, I love the work that, um, Terry and Bill are going to do on this. That could be a multi-month process. And if we wait for that work to be complete, David's exiting on June 30th, that, that, you know, those, we're going to have conflicting, uh, issues there as we continue the search for new town managers. So I think the, personally, I think the quicker we can bring on this committee, um, I think it would benefit, um, all of us.
Father, have you gone so far as to, um, sort of just brainstorm about what their charge might be so that we have some guidance at the front end?
Not yet.
Well, before it gets to an agenda, you're going to need a charge statement.
Yeah.
At a minimum.
And in the town's defense, we have liaisons from the department heads going to most of the meetings. Rick Patterson goes and Brady goes and Matt goes. So we have a mechanism, but I just kind of want to have a council presence of some sort.
Yeah, it's two different sides of the house and they are looking at two different things. There's the administrative side and they report up through David. And then the appointed members are actually on the policy side. And they need to fall within the same line of, um, structure and communication. But clarifying people's roles and responsibilities will go a long way to solve a lot of these issues. I think it's very doable.
I think it's very doable also. I go to the environmental committee just to be present. But Brady or Rick is there every month and Brady or Rick will bring their reports forward. So I'm just there to cheer for them, let them know that I care. Yeah.
So, so Lisa, to your point, I mean, the important thing is, is that we need to, we need to be, council needs to be providing the information and support to give our chairs the ability they need to run the meetings. What's happening in some cases is the chair is either ill-equipped or feels ill-equipped. And so the staff member is running the meeting and that's not the way it works. That's not the way it should work. Staff members there support, but they're not driving the meeting and we, we've got some of that going on now. We need to fix it so the chairs feel empowered to run the meeting.
I think a more active role for the vice chair. To ask them to step in and take over if something happens to the chair. And that's a relationship John and I, uh, developed. It just, it doesn't make sense for me never to talk to him and then something happens to me and he steps in and has no idea what's going on. Um, so that's another element that we might want to consider. So are you okay with moving on?
Thank you all. Sorry. Because we own the details on this. So, um, an explanatory preface of why we're doing this, right? The rationale, charts, tentative charge statement, uh, scope of responsibilities, number of members, um, length of term, probably some other details I'm missing off the top of my head. That needs, Bob, that needs to come out and go to mayor and council and management before it gets anywhere near an agenda. And then you'll get feedback. And there's probably a couple of other little points in there, minutes, board outs, so on.
Not to, not to belabor the point, but while we're talking about it, one of the things we must start doing as a council, responsible council, is making sure that, that, that we communicate to the community and potential applicants what the skillset needs to be to work on these committees. And, um, you know, we, we have to stop putting people on committees because we like them and because they're friends, we're friends with them. And there was a time when that might have worked for Oak Island, but it, it no longer works. We need specific skillsets and we, we need to define those and be clear, be clear about that.
Especially on this committee. This is a committee that is designed to gather expertise. So, yeah, some qualifications are probably in order here, Bob. And that would be the first really for many of our committees, it's just goodwill. I'm, I'm willing to step forward. But these folks are dealing with hydrology and erosion and scientific things and they need a background. And if we truly have those people, how wonderful, right? That's a good point, Terry. So as you think about it, you'll come across some more detail. The more detail you can put in there, the more comfortable everyone's going to be with this.
No, great suggestion. Thank you.
Um, so if your next page should be objective back to 2.3, you see that? I'm sorry, these got jumbled, but I couldn't see them this morning in the thumbnail frames. To get them ordered. Yeah, right there. So, yeah, it is going back to two. You find it, Bill?
I will. I did.
Awesome. Again, sorry for the confusion. Um, 2.3, we've already talked about the architect and the builder. Um, funding sources for parks and rec for renovation. Uh, we never started that. It's really tied to 2.3. 2.5 is done. The par three is, um, is humming along. And their metrics seem to continue to rise with the improvements and the added.
I think Mayor, I mean, I think Bob, Bob attended the last few meetings for the par three.
Oh, good, okay.
And so he did bring up, uh, the marketing and those kinds of things that, that I'm sure he wants to, or something.
Thank you. I didn't know that.
Yeah, I was, I was going to jump in, but David, thank you. So I think that, you know, the course is certainly more playable. You know, Jonathan is just doing an amazing job, um, ensuring that, uh, the par three is an enjoyable experience. Because I've played before all the renovations and it was not an enjoyable experience. Um, but it sure is an enjoyable experience. Now, the course is in great shape. Um, maintenance, we, it's, you know, we're certainly staying on top of maintenance. It's the marketing and advertising though, is something that, you know, certainly in April, we'll meet at the budget meetings. But it's something that I want to give a strong pitch for. That, um, I would dare say that the majority of residents on Oak Island don't know that we have a par three. And I would dare say that people who live in Southport and Bolivia, um, would just simply scratch their head if they had heard that we have a par three. You know, we have one sign, thank you, Howie Franklin, um, on Long Beach Road for it. And so there's no marketing. There's a Facebook page, but what I'd like to do is really. so, there's no marketing, there's a Facebook page, but what I'd like to do is really trying to get some volunteers, if there is volunteers in the community, but somebody who has some marketing expertise, and take a look at the website, and see if they are willing to maybe lend a hand, and make some suggestions on how we can, at a no cost or marginal cost, is how we can help them become, stand on their own from a budget perspective. I think when we work on the budget numbers in April, everybody's going to be very pleased, but that delta between how much they need is going to shrink significantly now. Now, maybe, hopefully, it's not just a one-time thing, it's going to be ongoing, but if we can take what the work they're doing, that Jonathan and the par three committee have done, in conjunction with some additional marketing advertising, I think we can continue to move in that direction.
Excellent, glad to hear that, thank you for working with them.
Sorry to prolong this, as a former member, and as a registered golfer, I can tell you this, volunteers are wonderful things to have. For four years, at least, I've recommended a major expansion in terms of the budget, and I think that's what we need. We cannot ask them to attract more golfers, more rounds, more revenue, without a sophisticated advertising campaign. To me, when people complain about the subsidy, we're not doing enough to raise the revenue, so, it's, I see it as investment, right? As you probably know from talking to them, their available dollars are paltry, right? And we should be actively campaigning with thousands of vacationers, and thousands of surrounding residents, to bring them to the course. It is unique, it's not perfect, but it's unique. What's unique about it is it's multi-generational, I can take my grandkids out there, anybody can play it, even if you're terrible, which I am most of the time, you can play it, right? So, I not only support getting volunteers with marketing experience, that's all well and good, I want to give them the funding to actually do something. What I want from them is a plan. Yeah.
And I have challenged the committee to put together a marketing plan, and they just don't have that expertise. But once we, if we can get a marketing resource to maybe come in and host a meeting with the par three committee, that could talk to them about, you know, I threw out some ideas around marketing, said, so tell me what, you know, what would, if you had a blank slate, what would you like to do? And they said, we'd like to do wine and beer sales. It's like, hmm. And they'd like to have food trucks, and they'd like to do date night on Friday nights, and specials on Saturday morning, because Saturday morning during the summer is absolutely dead because of the turnover. So they are starting to think that there are some things that they could put together. I think their advertising budget, off the top of my head, I think it was $2,500, I believe.
$2,000.
$2,000. So, John, to your point, I mean, $2,000 is a paltry sum. If we're trying to get them to be, to stand on their own two feet, it's going to take a lot more than $2,000.
There are other things we can do, too. You know, we, in the past, not to belabor the efforts of the past, which unfortunately fell on barren soil, we can get every Realtor to promote the course, if we had a brochure, right? We can put a banner over streets, you know, we can have a campaign, especially aimed at tourists, right? And we just have not done that, so.
Rental property.
Yeah, absolutely. So, there's more that can be done.
David may know more about this than I do, but we've tried to get beer sales out there, and we, and the homeowners association, box.
They signed it over to Charlie, because Charlie lived out there, and Charlie was talking to them, and he never, I don't think, it never went to the full of the main homeowners association. I think they got quite a few of them out there at eight or nine. We never got in front of them, and the, one of the concerns was, the area that they had, we'd be serving it out of their kitchen. We don't have, I mean, we just have the little room there, so we would have to look at storage, and so we were going to have to take part of our maintenance building and put storage and stuff in, but it would be a responsibility of theirs, because we would be serving it in their facility.
And they were concerned about Vanessa Drive, drivers driving on Vanessa Drive after drinking.
Charlie came back and said there were several issues that they had, and we needed to either have a full-fledged campaign to go forward with it, and at that time, the course was sort of, sort of down, with the greens weren't in good shape, and last year, we said, let's give it another year before we go back into it and get it, let him work his magic and get the green grass, and now it's there, so now it's time to re-advertise, because we had talked about this last year, but we didn't want to advertise something and bring somebody something that wasn't right. So that's the reason why we're sort of a year behind, but now that the course is back in shape, and if somebody would like to go talk to the homeowners association, or get on their schedule to go talk to them, but I can see where it'd be a point of theirs, where a concern about us serving beer in their facility, and they got the swim pool and everything else there, so either we do beer carts or something like that, so we're on the outside, and then us dealing with the pier in 801, I mean, we have the pier, we store the beer in 801, so we had to get special permission to do two premises and those kind of things, so, it's something to work out, and it's something that's probably would generate funds, but again, we're going into their community and starting selling alcohol, so, it's something to look at.
And here's your brochure, and objective 2.6. I think Mike started on this.
Yes.
Redoing the Oak Island, the tiny post. I don't know whether it was ever brought to fruition.
He'd update it, well, you'd need to update it annually, but I know he did it last year, but it needs to be done every year. Then we just got the advertisements from the chamber, they have a, they have a magazine that goes out that we advertise in, they just asked us if we were wanting to do the eighth of a page or quarter of a page for the pier in 801 again, I mean, excuse me, 801 in the par three, so we're getting ready to renew those and those ads, too, so, there's a few things that we're in, but I'm sure there's other places we could be as well.
So, that brings us to public safety, and objective 1.1 is done in spades, as the community programs, they've been very popular. The traffic study of high-traffic areas with priority given to Beach and Oak Island Drive, those were done, as well as was yacht. Streetscape is actually...
There's really only a part of that being done, Streetscape, because we're only doing, we really haven't come, when you were talking about earlier, about doing something in the commercial corridor.
Right.
There's nothing, years ago, when we put the first sidewalk there, there was grass and everything down through there, then people's driven over the years, and we can't put curb and gutter, because we don't have stormwater, and we can run everything, too, so the business district is a little flat, to sort of say the least of that, but there's not much we can do as far as street and sidewalks, but there is changes that we can do through there, different lights, different light poles, different areas, we've looked at doing something in the alleyways, but we've never come down to what something we really want something to look like.
Right.
And I think if we were to look at one block, just pick a block, and say, all right, here's the older buildings that are there, this is what it's going to be, this is the mom and pop places, and try to figure out what you really want it to be. I mean, we are going to get the sidewalks on both sides of the road at some point, but just by putting the sidewalks there, it really doesn't beautify anything, so I think at some point, we're going to figure out exactly what you would like for it to look at, and do some kind of rendition of what we want for the future.
So...
And then, I'm sorry, but 1.2, we still got to decide which red lights we want to do for the crosswalks, do we want to do it at 40, 46, 51st, 58, and 79? I know we want to do 51st and 58, and probably 79, 40th, 46, I think probably 40th would be better, but then again, you, that's four red lights you're going to have now for crosswalks. We can look at other areas, people keep saying, you know, we need to do something at crosswalk areas, 9th, 20th, 31st, or 30th. Everywhere we do it, we have so many people, it's going to be a red light, so it's something for everybody to keep in mind.
And in the summertime, where we're wall-to-wall cars on Oak Island Drive, then we had three or four red lights slowing them down even more.
And we're going, we've agreed to do cameras with DOT on East Oak Island Drive, because we can see it, at 11, about 10:30, things start backing up every day during the summer, and then they can sequence their lights, to be able to change the lights, to try to get the flow going, because they didn't know we had a problem, they said, and they may not have known we had a problem, but now we'll be able to identify those intersections with cameras, so they can see what the traffic flow is. But it is something that, at some point, councils have had to decide what we want to do with the other red lights for crosswalks.
I know we're going to talk about this later, so I'll just make a brief comment. I understand the limitations that you ran into looking at Streetscape redesign, but the other point about making it vestriand friendly by having sidewalks on both sides is achievable, and that takes us to the next level, which is something this council has never really taken up. I've asked Mr. Eads twice, and twice he's replied in the affirmative, you can have aesthetic zoning. Think about that. You can, now that we have a CDO, we can incentivize certain aesthetic changes, right? This is not an impossible task, but it's one that's going to take long-range planning and money, right? And I think passing something and providing an incentive to change the cosmetic appearance, make it walking-friendly, and change it so it reflects a more pleasing aesthetic, is how I would put it. And now, the problem with all that is, you know, my aesthetic is not your aesthetic, and so on and so forth, but there's still an opportunity, we just, we don't have the ordinance in place, we don't have the program in place, but, yeah, we could make over downtown, that seems to be on everybody's list, it's on my list, year after year, it's on Bill's list, it's on the mayor's list, so it can be done, but, and then Mark, we're here, he would talk about special zoning over the district, you could put in there. So, there's more we can do there, and, you know, a former town official said, well, it looks quaint, well, I don't think it looks quaint, I think it looks messy, uninviting, right? And so, that's something, if we're serious, we can take on.
I would agree, so I'd like to see us revise objective 1.3, to include more of John, what you're suggesting, and, as well as others, and bring it back, with consideration, that I would like to see that go, there's a lot of positive things in here. That low-hanging fruit, it's not even very good.
Now that we've brought the economic developer into the group, we can get some, we can get some input from her to do that process.
You never know who's beyond you.
So, 1.4...
I'm sorry, can I just stop real quick? Can we go back just to 1.2 for a minute? Before checking the box saying it's been completed, can we add something to that as an open item for LSV?
Sure.
And maybe ask our police chief, David, to work with staff, come back with some recommendations? I've done a lot of work around what we can do to kind of clean up our LSV issue, and I think that we can hopefully put that to bed by, you know, sharing some ideas of what we can do to minimize the LSV issues that we tend to have in the summer.
It's always come up, that the LSV's on Oak Island Drive from whatever 38th Street on, has always been a nuisance to the locals.
So, the work that Mark's done with the RPO is taken care of in objective 1.4. There will be publicly-held meetings with the R-TAC, which he sits on. And then 1.5.
Yeah, we did, yeah, we did that last year, we're getting ready to set up that, and we'll send that out to all of council. We usually have a meeting with Castle Beach, Brunswick County, Southport, for those people, they come over, we go over our hurricane preparedness plan with them. All of us have seen it so many times, we go through it pretty quick, county gives us their updates, if there's anything changed, we go over those, we go over the mutual aid agreements at that time, and then we ask if there's any kind of changes, we go over our parking plan, now that we have paid parking, we went over that a little bit last year. But each town gets to have their voice going around the table, sort of to say where we're at and what we're doing, but we'll be scheduling that here before the season comes up. Again, we just had the police training room last year, the county guy, David, he was new, so he came over and talked to us, we got the Coast Guard, they come, we try to include everybody that we can, agency-wise, to come talk to us, to make sure everybody, all the familiar faces, again, and everybody knows everybody.
And there is a written plan.
So, in here, where it says, we will ensure a tabletop exercise, are we...
That part's not happening.
That's not happening.
No.
Why not?
We do one internally, I mean, we do, every year after a storm, we do an assessment of the situations that we have, and then our policy that says that the tabletop exercises we do, usually it's just two or three department heads get together, we go through the scenarios and look up in the plan to make sure that we still have damage assessment teams contacted at this point, if conditions that waste water, what do we do at this point? And we just follow through it to make sure that we have some, we've never done a live tabletop or anything with outside agencies or anybody else.
So, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, I think we're on the same wavelength.
Yeah, I think so. First of all, as you know, I have consistently appreciated your work during natural disasters. I think the town has responded to extraordinary circumstances, and you deserve credit for that, and I made that a part of your evaluation, as you know. My first question is, I want to make sure that you have captured that knowledge that you have that's here, so that your successor is the beneficiary of that. All the little tweaks, little things you know intuitively to do right away, that's really critical, because we can't be assured that the next manager, he or she, has hurricane response planning or experience. They've probably had natural disaster experience, that's one. Two, while we're on the subject of hurricanes, I would hope that we're going to think about a hurricane decal as a way to expedite return, I realize there are pluses and minuses to that, but I think that probably is a good thing. And lastly, for you to talk about with your staff, and just to think about, in my experience as an executive, we had a, I'll call it a curated tabletop drill. We assembled our staff, we had some from the county, or in my case, from the state, come in and present a unique problem, we were totally, we had no idea what it would be, and it was scored and observed, and it was more formal, walking through it, and, you know, they would pick all kinds of things, the roof off your high school just blew off, you've got 150 casualties, you know, can you stage the triage, what would you do next? How would you relocate? And it's interesting, that was one of the drills that we did, in my last job as an interim superintendent, we had E-CIASIS, and we shut down the school because our power lines were lost. The school I was managing was a middle school, I got a call from, I was then the principal interim, and I got a call from the superintendent, said, we need to get these kids back in school, can you get a school up and running in 48 hours? I've got a church that's going to house you. Supreme challenge, fortunately, and had a tabletop years before, but, I mean, what would you do if you lost a school? What would you do if you lost a pumping station? What would you do, you know, if the entire infrastructure, the town was dead, you know? Something like that, when you get a novel problem, it really forces you to think beyond what your own staff can conjure up. Because the way I hear you present that, you're kind of revealing what you know, I want us to be tested by what we don't know, you know? The more you can identify what you don't know, the better off you are, just a thought.
Yeah, I mean, on ours, I mean, the good thing is, the department heads that you have, and the staff that you have, has been through many of different events here on the island, from flooding to wind to airplane crashes, to all kinds of different, dump truck off the bridge... From flooding to wind to airplane crashes to all kinds of different dump truck off the bridge. I mean, we've seen quite a few things here.
Yes, you have. You've seen a lot and you've handled them.
But the department heads, they've been here and handled it as well. So we do have a written plan for disasters.
I'm not, I'm, this is not a critique. This is a.
No, I'm just saying.
This is a suggestion.
But we don't, we have not done a tabletop like your suggestion.
Okay, right. Because the problem we have, or the manager has, is you have search, safety and emergency personnel and department heads and their experience. Problem is, how do you continue ongoing training with them? So you have to get to, I think, something novel, something they haven't practiced or ever worked, right? Like an airport plane crash, an airport fire that's out of control. Have we walked through that? Did we really understand what we would have to do?
Oh, we have. I mean, we brought a plane here, we did the fire simulation.
There's something out there that would stretch them, that's all. We're on same age.
Perfect technical standpoint. You used, you used examples, you know, what happens if town hall gets blown away? What's our business continuity plan even for something like that? Not only dealing with injured people and things like that, but there's a whole scenario that I'm concerned about.
What happens if we're hacked and taken down?
I used to design those for Red Cross National Headquarters and for chapters, or multiple chapters, so.
So the good, the good thing we've done is the phone system that we have, Lisa can take the phone out of her office and go plug it in her house. And she'll have the same thing she has right here. The computers are the same way. As long as we can find somewhere with wifi, we can keep running the town. We can get into everywhere that we want to get into. We can get onto the servers. Everything's backed up through hooks. Then hooks will give us an ID number. We click into that, and we're back up and running. So there is layers that we do have. There's not every scenario. No, man, we don't have everything covered.
Okay, I, you know, I, the point's been made. I mean, if you look at NIH, right, all the resources available to them, they had never thought about a pandemic. They had no idea what to do, and they got.
Didn't have that one either.
That's my point. Well, that's my point, is you plan for the impossible. It stretches you, it's useful. But I'm very confident you know what to do. I just want, up to level with our training, I guess.
If you turn the page, these are the submissions that everyone sent where there were alike topics or suggestions. Then I simply took targets from the individual submissions. But in this case, goal one, to improve the council committee board alignment inefficiencies. Terry, Bob, and Bill, since I really didn't submit a report that this is, excuse me, something I'm very committed to doing. And so these were just some suggestions as far as tasks or targets in terms of what can be achieved under that goal number one. This one is clearly near term. Depending on when you start, I think it could be finished and implemented in this fiscal year. So it doesn't begin until July, and then you've got till the following July.
What are you wanting clarified?
Whether or not we want to adopt this possibly as a goal. We can't do all of these things, I guess, is my point. We just went through a series of goals where we're, we're resurrecting, renewing some of them.
So if I can comment for just a second.
Go ahead.
I made the point to you when I turned in my goals, because mine were three pages. Some things might not necessarily be a goal of the entire council. They're more housekeeping things. A lot of the things that Bill and Bob and I are interested in are really housekeeping sort of things. And so I hope we'll look at this from a big picture, and then some of these things may be smaller, you know, smaller underneath it, if that makes sense.
I didn't put everything in there, so I kind of called through them. Now whether I called the right ones or not is to be determined. And if you don't like what's here, this isn't the first time we'll visit it. But, or if I've missed something you think is important, please let me know. Second one is agree on a defined search and transition process for the new town manager. That's a go. That's near term. Plan and execute a successful managerial transition. John, that was yours.
Yes, that is a go. When we get our full complement of people back, I'll need a partner, and I can begin to lay that out. I know people around the table already have ideas, so I want the benefit of their thinking before I start putting pen to paper. But yes, that's a go.
Develop a comprehensive multi-year plan for infrastructure.
I'm willing to defer on this. What I was thinking of here is, you know, we talk about stormwater, talk about the streets, talk about technology, talk about pump stations. I'd like to put it all together in one piece where we can really see it and see the anticipated costs. I know I was surprised, not shocked, surprised, at the ongoing maintenance costs and what you are forecasting, right? And I think this, this is a goal that needs to be deferred till we get the new manager, he or she. This needs to be top of their list because there's millions of dollars involved here. And we're not seeing it in the round. We're seeing, here's a stormwater crisis this year, there's a sewer crisis next year, the roads are an ongoing crisis and so on. We can handle this. The parks are a mess, you know. I want to see the infrastructure laid out and costs associated with it, put it on a timeline. That, that's a major piece of work, so.
But I think it's an absolute necessity.
Yeah, I would defer on that one, cutting the new manager's bailiwick.
And your draft three-year plans are in your box. I got them printed this morning, so.
Okay.
Okay, so I take care of that one. Go ahead, Matt.
Five, develop a multi-year plan for improving Main Street. We just talked about that earlier, so we can combine these. It just came up.
Well, I would ask Hallie to begin working on that. If that's embraced by the new manager, we can prioritize it, but that's been fixing work. And it's a big work on our part because we're going to need an aesthetic zoning component and/or an incentive fund. And again, we need Mark in the room to have experienced with overload districts, and he's already done it, so.
Is there something you've already started or something like that?
It has come up as what they're interested in and others need to accomplish. First of all, you need to consider their, you know, their, their.
So I'll defer on this too. Again, ask manager next whether he or she wants to get out of this for a while. Does it take action by council or does it wait on Hallie's part? But it, but it should be done, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no.
I mean, everybody keeps saying fix the CB, and it's like, okay, well.
Well, we do have the one to three years, so we can extend it or defer it. So it depends on how strongly you feel about it.
Well, let's put these on the three year, not while we buy some time. Because otherwise, as I've stated earlier, we're going to plunge the new manager into task overload.
Goal six, identify an equitable manageable process for the identification, communication, tracking, and of process code violations. I know you're working on this, David. But Matt, I don't know how far he's gotten.
So we, tomorrow, he's bringing up, he was five different cases. We went over a conversation with Brian yesterday about the transition from what staff prepares and how we need to prepare to give to Brian, so then Brian can take it and do what he needs to do. And the follow-up between if our staff sees that they've made the improvements or if something's changed, how he wants staff to notify him of the processes that are going on in between. It's getting closer. We're going to talk again tomorrow and do some sort of a drill so I can see what happens if Terry calls in and says, our Bill's got a problem in his yard. Edger goes, looks at it, starts the process. Bill cleans some of it, doesn't finish it cleaning up. The timetable following the UDO to make sure we're following it and see how long it takes. Does that need to be shortened? Does that need to be lengthened? Is there a review process in the middle? There's nothing, there's nothing to keep, staff starts it. They put notations into the system, which when we change to Edmunds, I believe, it's going to work better because then it has a, a flow thing that'll notify them saying, hey, it's been 10 days. Need to go back and look at this. Right now, they're sort of doing that themselves. And they get on something else, and they may not go by there for three weeks. But then the repeat offenders, there's nothing in there really about what to do about those kind of people. So something's got to be written up. But we're trying to go through and walk it through the beginning process all the way through. And then once we get sort of that established, then we'll, Matt's going to come back and present that to council as sort of a flow chart and a tree to sort of, if this happens, it goes here, if this happens, it goes there, something that they can follow. But we got to make sure that on the end of it, Brian has a workable product, and we've submitted all the paperwork. We've got all the boxes checked. We got the updated photos, everything else to make sure that when we do give it to him, he's ready to go with it. And do we want him to write a fourth letter? Or do we want him to file those paperwork? So there's, right now, it's either or. So we need to try to figure out exactly how we would like to finish the process and how much time we really want it to take. Because right now, you start it. It's almost five months before it gets to Brian. And sometimes, some, somewhere in there, they're going to do something. They may clean up half of it or a quarter of it. Is that, is that enough to wipe it away? No, not to me. But there's got to be a way, and we're trying to figure out to follow it all the way through the process, and to have staff be able to go back and look, take up-to-date pictures and those kind of things to document everything before we hand it to Brian. And once we hand it to Brian, we should be out of it. It should be finished at that point for us unless he needs a updated photo.
He should then be giving us routine reports on what the process looks like on his side of that matrix. So he should also have a checklist that he's going down and following, and we should be getting routine reports.
We, we talked a little bit about that. But we're trying to wrap up our part so then we can make sure whatever he has goes through. I know Councilman Bob there has asked for that information as well. Brown was supposed to give him a call yesterday. I don't know if he did or didn't, but we were supposed to give him a call, talk to him about a few things that he had asked. But we, there is, we need to, in Edmunds, they say we're going to be able to track it. And if we can track it, then we can do a spreadsheet and just send the report to council. And then you can see what the activities are on all of them. Matt said that he'll be able to check which box. You may not see all the notes, but you can see a screenshot of what is available that you can be seen on that piece of paper. But I think going forward, we're going to have to see what change of software is coming right in the middle of this.
Right.
So it's something else that we got to look at to see what's going to be able to be provided once we get it. It's supposed to be better. Catherine says that sometimes it's better for her and sometimes it's not. So it's just something we got to work through. But following the UDO and our ordinances, there's some time lapses that we have found that sort of throw things back. That needs to be worked out and brought back up.
I've found that oftentimes, we send four or five letters for the same offense before we ever get around to turning it over to our town attorney. And then it may or may not get quickly pursued then. I wish we'd send one or two letters and then turn it over to the attorney.
There needs to be something laid out. Bill pick, you know, you get a dumpster delivered to your yard. Well, that doesn't mean you've cleaned up anything. And that doesn't mean you replaced the, you know, the windows or whatever the complaint's been. And there's got to be something, if the person hasn't done 50%, then it doesn't count, and the process is still going on. Or there's, it's just, it's left up to too much interpretation of staff.
And that can't, so can we make this a near term? I think this is something that absolutely, it creates inequities across the island. And people feel picked on because the person across the street isn't.
They feel left out.
What we're asking for is an, is an analysis?
We're asking for, asking for a process.
Okay. Analysis leads to a new process. Let me say this. It's all well and good that you're looking at the relationship between the UDO and the process. If I step back from this, and I'll use business problems if that happens. So I open it, you're going to plan, I open a ticket on it, right? That ticket gets processed in multiple levels. I'd like to see a discussion around right-of-way. Because two councils ago, this was a major goal, clean up the right-of-way. For a while, with the previous town manager, Jake, we, we averaged about 40 a month. And we still could not make a dent in right-of-way violations, even though we were closing 50% of it. So if I look at that process with a major initiative and with council, with Mr. Eads and myself saying, okay, all the universe of right-of-way violations are enormous, many of them pre-existing for a long time. We don't want to go to war. We don't want to jihad over this. But let's focus on safety, hazards, denial of access. Even with that limitation in the right-of-way cleanup, we couldn't get it done. It's still ongoing. So that, that says to me, that's a case study we need to really look at. Because as people pointed out when we adopted the tree ordinance, this is really a major, major step forward. How are you going to enforce it? How are you going to do that? So I want to know what happened with that initiative, why it stalled, and how we improved that process. Because I know we tried. We, I could see the violations in the monthly report, but it didn't seem to make a difference. And, you know, I can look out my window and see right-of-way violations. Cars parked there for weeks at a time. Business in the home, I'm going to ensure they have a license down my street, you know. On and on it goes. People with plants clearly in the right-of-way, you know, all kinds of stuff, so.
Somebody built a beach in the right-of-way with sand.
There you go. On and on it goes, ballards, statues, statuary, or whatever. So that, to me, would be an important case study for us to understand. And it may well be, the process is, is delimited by nature. We don't have the manpower. We're not, the way we're aligned with the UDO doesn't work. I mean, there could be a lot of answers. That, to me, is the D case study because that was a priority for four years for council. And I know Jake worked on it earnestly, and we still could not close that gap.
David, what is your estimation of time? You said Matt is going to bring something to us. Any idea when that's going to happen?
We're finishing another, hopefully we finish another part of review of the applications tomorrow. So we asked to see if he'd have something available by February. I don't know what the agenda is looking like so far. Or it may just be, we need to have a meeting to talk about that. Because there is other issues. And Councilman Bach, what we, what council came back was they narrowed the, if you were able to pull the car off, we said it was eight feet, 10 foot. We talked about that for a while, and we came back, I think it was eight feet. So anything past eight feet, they were allowed to keep. But anything inside that, they needed to get an encroachment. We had two, probably two of those applied through the town, the flower beds and those kind of things. But then that sort of went away once we started talking about right-of-way parking and those things again, came back up, and then it just sat.
Matt, one's out, but I want to know why. Because I want to learn from that, right? I would be very, very cautious about launching any initiative for code enforcement if we didn't think we could manage it, right? And I'm worried about the tree ordinance for that very reason. Do we have the bandwidth to do it?
That's why the other day, in the, sort of just the overview of what we're looking at next year's budget, we had the two people in zoning. Didn't know if one of them would be utilizing trees because we didn't know exactly what trees would be. But then the other person would be utilized within the zoning. Through the budget cycle. Through the budget cycle, there's a lot of these things that hopefully we can work out.
While we're talking about right-of-way, so many people in town have gravel in their front yards. I know you hate hearing this, Steve, come out of my mouth.
You passed an ordinance that said you couldn't. So we started telling people they couldn't.
We passed an ordinance, in my, I thought, that said no, we were trying to stop right-of-way parking for our paid parking program. And then when we stopped right-of-way parking for a paid parking program, a month later, we allowed right-of-way parking on the north side of Oak Island Drive.
And allowed it all summer, too.
Yeah, allowed it all summer. Now people on the north side of Oak Island Drive are being told they can't put gravel in their front yards.
That ordinance didn't change. You, you just allowed parking. But you didn't change the ordinance back where they couldn't put gravel in the driveway or along the front yard. And it doesn't matter, does it, wait? If you want to put stone there, let them put stone and park there. We, we don't, we'll enforce whatever way you want it to be. But we have two different ways on two different sides of towns currently. And we have an ordinance that still stands on that side of the town. You didn't change that ordinance. You just allowed parking over there.
So I need to bring up right-of-way parking. Gravel on the right-of-way on the north side of Oak Island Drive.
We'll do a different ordinance for one side of the town and one on the other.
I understand.
Because if, to have paid parking become an effective revenue stream, you had to eliminate on the south side. As you know, I, I recommended eliminating across the town. I was on minority in that issue. But there are other examples of right-of-way enforcement. And again, I want to learn from our, there's still street ends, especially on Yacht Drive, where people have essentially moved into the street end. With tables, equipment, boats, cars.
Yeah.
I mean...
Treat it like it's sterile.
So there's clear safety violation, clear denial of public access. And yet, they exist. So I want to know why we weren't able to re-severe the street ends. I realize that there are, what, 6,000 houses, so it's more difficult. But the street ends belong to us and belong really to every citizen to access the end of council. I, I don't understand why that was, but I want to understand why that was such a formidable task that we couldn't get it accomplished.
So the parking, so you had, you asked police chief to do that. Police chief went in and started doing those. And then we changed the hours. Because when it was 24 hours, it was a little bit easier to maintain. Then when we went back to the 48 and 72 hours, now we have, we don't have the staff on the police force to be able to ride down there and look and see if something's parked.
I understand the parking. I'm talking about street ends that are occupied by owners that we haven't reclaimed.
We don't have the staff. I mean, you're giving as many a thing with two people.
Okay.
There's, there's no way for us to do everything you ask. That's just point blank.
Okay. Well, that's what we need to know so we can discuss, well, you know, where we're going. Either modify the ordinance or provide more staff, better educational campaign, right? Because people are still, I would say, in some cases, willfully, if you're a right-of-way ordinance or aren't aware. They don't realize the plantings that they have, the ballards, the statues, the palm trees are in violation. People who could put picnic tables and fire pits and canoes out there, they know. They do it anyway.
I mean, if we sit, from a very good point, from awareness perspective, David, is it possible, or it should be fairly easy, is just sending a letter off to everybody, every homeowner on, on the street end on Yacht Drive, just to remind them of what the ordinance states. And maybe that, from an awareness perspective, will get half of the people who have decided on squatters' rights to change their mind and to clean things up.
We can drive it.
Yeah, I think just, again, just an education and awareness. The second thing before we move on, I want to stay on, is the legal action. So on Wednesday of last week at the council, council meeting, as I was walking in, I walked in with our town attorney, who looked me in the eye and said, you'll have, you, council will have that list of all of our pending legal actions for violations, as well as those that we haven't yet, but it's in our docket. And you'll have it by Friday of last week. And I'm just curious, you know, why it seems to be taking so, it's not your purvey, but have you heard from our town attorney as to when we can expect to have that in our hands?
We ask him just as you ask him. And Lisa asks him the same.
Mayor asks.
I can't.
Bill asks him. We've been on it forever.
We, we went over it the other day again, the list. There is, I forgot the number. We added four more to the list the other day. And he was going to call you and talk to you about it. And that was the last thing he said. Can you answer for me?
There's a, there's one comment I'd like to add to the discussion about the code enforcement. And that is, we may indeed possibly, probably do need additional staff. But we, in that process, we have to make sure that our procedures and the process that we've established works. Because if the process is broken, you can add 10 people to a department and still not solve the problem. So I hope we look at those two in conjunction with each other. Is it truly a manpower thing or is it a manpower and a procedure thing?
What I'm hearing from the discussion, we need two people for the, to patrol the trees now, possibly, and three or four more police officers come budget time to...
Well, in code enforcement, there's only one person that does the violations, and that's David. Edger's going out doing the day-to-day operations stuff, all the inspections and checks and those type of things. Right now, there's only one person doing that. Yeah. But I understand.
And I know that one person. He does a very good job, but he's one person. Yeah.
To get back on track then, which one is that?
Six.
Turn the page.
pedestrian safety, accessibility and safety, sorry. This is completing the current obligations we have for the accesses, convey, and we have to analyze. Again, planning for additional sidewalks and crosswalks and potentially, this is not possible. So we have one to complete, to complete. And then is there another one that...
They're working on 20th now.
About ninth.
We're doing the cost comparison now for ninth. They will issue that one. And then they looked at one on the west end in the future, possibly doing.
Okay.
I don't remember. I think it was fifth or sixth.
Southwest six.
Six, yeah.
It got blown away from a hurricane years ago. Yeah.
So that was the one the site cells looked at years ago, two years, three years ago.
I don't know how, you tell me how to peg that. Do we put it in one to three years?
Well, the ninth and 20th will be done this year. Talking, I think EB gave you a price of a million dollars or something, million something for six. Because whenever you want to spend a million dollars.
And the others are 500, aren't they?
Well, it's half of it. And we do the other half. You can only do a 50% increase over a certain period of time.
Yeah.
So I'll split these into different... Transportation corridor study and traffic circle feasibility study. Are these things that the RPO does for us?
I believe so.
Yeah, that's in the works.
He had brought it up before to them, and they had given a points or whatever the right term was that they described the other day.
Yeah.
I don't know where it went after it went out of theirs. I don't know where it went with DOT ranking.
Last mark.
That would, that would be something they would have.
Land use plan update. That should be in this fiscal year?
Yeah, I think that was on my list. I think, I think my name should be in there as well on that one list.
That's fine. I agree now.
I'm going to write your name in.
Thank you.
But that's ongoing, right?
Yeah, that's ongoing.
And then I sent Matt, the same time I sent Heather something to give you all four of them.
Thank you.
Copies of them.
Thank you.
So you'll have them.
Complete the UDO table of uses.
Ongoing.
Yesterday, I believe.
Yeah. Well, now that they're off trees, I guess, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Now that they're off trees, they can give attention to the table of uses.
Yeah, and boy, it's a long story, and I'll try to make it short. I requested to Liz and David and Lisa that we have Matt come back at the February meeting. He created a timeline for council that was presented last May. It was at John Bach's request. And it, there were the three choices of things to prioritize, and council picked the UDO table of uses. And Matt laid out a month-by-month timeline. So we've now, that timeline has elapsed. And so I'm asking that Matt come back and give us a realistic timeline for when it's going to be finished and to take into consideration adding second meetings. That's been a really hard thing for the planning board to get scheduled. We did a good job of it during the UDO housekeeping phase with Wes McLeod. But working on the table of uses has been harder to get second meetings scheduled. And sometimes the regular meeting agenda is such that you just can't work on other things. You need a dedicated two or three hours to work on something. So I'm hoping Matt will bring council an update and a timeline that, and hopefully, he talks to planning board so that they're on board and says, yes, we think we can complete the work in this time.
Is he keeping up with that process any better?
Not in my opinion. Yeah, we lost a lot of time because documents just didn't get updated from month to month to month. Even after sending changes, we would still get the same document back without the changes. Yeah.
I don't think what else he's left in my data. So I'm sensing that's a near term.
Yeah, it's ongoing, but expedite. Yeah.
Goal 11, re-initiate plans for design and funding. We really talked about that.
Covered that.
Covered it.
And complete 2425 beach remuneration in the BNP.
Ongoing.
All of that is on the...
Ongoing, on schedule.
And then these were marked as long-term projects. They would have to be and not, some of these items are prohibited.
Yeah.
The, so my intent, if you're okay with it, come through your own notes and tell me where and what I missed, and I'm happy to re-insert it. I'll give you back a clean copy, also a copy of the work that we did today. And I want to show you a document.
Before you do that, Mayor, can we just make a note, a mention of the whole mark, all three of these long-term goals. So touch base for that.
So this is similar design to what we did in '22, '23. So I had sent this to everyone in advance of the meeting. So I've just heard John's recommendation. I've just cleaned it up a bit. But it's essentially the same thing. So there's one page per project, but there may be multiple goals. Is this useful to you, do you think? Is it easier to read than the format we went through today?
Today was helpful for me. I feel good about today. But I'm a visual person. Anything I look at is good for me.
Okay.
So I, I like this format for this reason. Persuaded Liz to adopt it. Normally, when you do any kind of strategic planning, I've been on strategic planning retreats, which is a form of hell, where you're locked out. And people will argue for hours, what's the difference between a goal and an objective, on and on. So this bypasses that, you know, there's a goal and then there's a target. That's what we're doing, right? We don't have to worry about a goal, objective, you know, action, all that nonsense. And there's a timeline, and there's a metric. Like what, what's the indicator of success? How do we know we've succeeded? It's pretty simple, straightforward. Not that we would argue about the difference between a goal and an objective, but I wanted to foreclose that discussion while illuminating this very thoroughly. So that's the reason for the chat.
So I can put these in that frame. I think it might be a little easier and you can provide more detail. And there's another template I wanted you to look at. So this is a piece of the staging for search, right? So it's a search process. So across the top is, you know, in this case, ideal town manager profile. So we're building the profile. Why are we doing it? What's the timeframe? How long should it take us? Who's participating in that process? And that can be who's, who's driving it, who's reviewing it, you know, we can divide that up. However, what are the tasks that need to be completed in that process? Inputs, what should we be looking at before we put pen to paper? Outputs, what it is we're looking to produce in terms of a deliverable. And then there's a piece on alignment I thought might be helpful. So the manager profile informs the job description, interview questions, manager evaluation form in part, overall search strategy should map to finding and attracting individuals of an executive caliber. So that would allow us to break into different parts and take different pieces, and everyone would know how and where they connect. Would that be helpful?
I want to quibble with some of...
Go ahead.
So on the line where it says...
This is very draft, so...
Yeah, I understand. Participants. I think that should be town council, town manager, town clerk, finance director, key staff, and public input. I don't know who select public leaders are, and that makes me nervous.
Because I was simply...
No, I'm just, we're, you're running an open public input session or sessions. That's what it should reflect.
Sure.
No, no one is being selected.
Yeah, no, that's good. You'll see this again. This was just an example.
I really like, I like the format. It breaks things into pieces so it doesn't all run together as a narrative. Makes it easy to understand the different components, what needs to be done, and, you know, I, I support the format. I think that's a very clear way to lay the process out.
It allows people to work a little more independently, just when, they'll know when they have to come back together or who they have to come back together to, and I think it really helped to keep us all in the loop.
There's no dates spelled out because it's too early, no dates.
Pretty much. I've just been putting them in months. We can be specific, but here's another example, a shorter one. So if there were a transition one in here, transition planning would be starting at the same time the search process planning is going on.
That makes it so much easier to understand.
If we were aligning, you would see those as pillars. Those pillars would be running adjacent to one another. But yet, the transition process may not happen until way down here, later in the timeframe. And then onboarding, planning happens up here, too, but doesn't actually get implemented until down there later in the year. Is this helpful?
Yes. How are we going to get all of those qualities into a job description? And who's going to do that?
It falls under search. Nothing... Nothing, I can assure you, nothing I will do won't, at, like, let me put it in a positive. Everything I do, every person will see.
Oh, I understand that, and I'm, I'm off that subject.
Okay.
I'm on to my new subject. We need to hurry. How do we take all this talk today and put it into a job description and get on with getting on?
And go home and take a nap and keep on keeping on. I've been working on this process, John will attest, as can Terry and Bob, since the weekend after the Thursday you told us you were retiring, David. So, um, this is what has kept me up at nights and out of the bars.
So, Debbie, Debbie asked, you know, some HR directors and things, or some companies that do the services that Bob was talking about earlier, and Terry was talking about. And one of the companies sent something back. So, I'll send you the email.
I saw that.
So, if you'll look through that, it gives you a lot of the detail about what they can do, or, you know, it gives you-
Pretty strong group.
-all kinds of levels, as they described it, all depends on what you really want them to do and how you want them to orchestrate it. Um, and then, they gave you an example of what ducks look like when they utilize ducks. I probably get, probably 15 or 20 of those a week from a firm. I mean, they just, you know, your manager and your own server miss, and they send them to you.
Yeah.
And you see, there's different companies out there, and some of them are setting up, and then they'll send you something saying, hey, you know, first round's done, no candidate was selected, we're opening it back up, or they'll send you something saying it's closed, or it's getting ready to close, that you forget to apply. So, they're, they aggressively go after people, and it's, it's mass mailings that they send out there and just start hitting people. And you can unsubscribe after everyone, but they're going to send it to you the next day again. So, although, those companies are out there, and it, it says, they'll write a job description, or you write the job description, or you write a part of the job description, or you do whatever you want to do, and they do what you don't want to do.
Yeah.
But, um, it all depends on the cost, it's what was discussed earlier. But I think it's a worthy thing for you to do.
So, these two in particular will end up being lists, this on the flip side with little checkboxes. So, y'all will have an opportunity to go by and say, you know, pick the ones, I'll add others to them that I pulled from the evaluation, et cetera. Y'all can just feed it back to me as, with check marks, the ones you feel particularly passionate about. If you check them all, we'll find a way to work them in. Um, but to wrap this up-
Tonight, before you do that, could you go back two slides to the priority worksheet? Three slide data. So, what I want to make sure we, we don't lose sight of, that goals frequently are tasks. And I want to make sure that we have a parent strategy. I like to make sure that we have a parent strategy that a goal rolls up to. So, instead of goals being a standalone, is where do they fit into the strategy in what we're attempting to accomplish here in our community?
I'm having to think about that. Well, we don't yet have a strategy.
Right. I mean, I think that we can begin to take a stab at that. Goals, you know, get the trash out on time. Those, those are tasks, and what's the overarching strategy? Overarching strategy, you know, controlling growth, uh, improving the streetscape, um, here in Oak Island. So, just have something, kind of a catch-all, so we know exactly if, if we have six goals, and all six goals fit under one of the strategies, that is probably a problem. We'd probably want to make sure that we're getting equal representation. Thank you.
I'll, I'll put that in action, and you can tell me if I did it right.
Thank you.
How's that?
I have one additional question, based on something you just said. It reminded me. So, we had started into creating a new evaluation process, and I, I think everybody, I know I did, submitted feedback on a document. What has happened to that document?
I can answer that.
Okay.
So, as the original author, along with Debbie, I borrowed the form, modified the form. Lisa kindly collected all the replies. I have the replies, I'm going to edit them. Mark has, um, requested that we add better metrics. And so, I have asked Mark to send me a sample of that, which I don't yet have, obviously due to the circumstance. Once I get that, I'm going to take a tutorial privilege and go through and incorporate, especially incorporate responses which are wrong, change this, change that, and send the document back out to the entirety of council and say, here's the edited version, do you agree? Yes, no? And you'll have that. I'm not working on the job description, that's a older problem over here, which a consultant may or may not solve.
It just needs to be party aligned.
I was going to say, I think there are some things in that document that are certainly, would be useful and applicable, but it sounds like we're not really close to having that revised document back.
Well, but that doesn't keep me, if it was offered, does it keep me from, um, following that, um, something else? But it would be helpful to, excuse me, it would be helpful to get that, that evaluation done. And I want to keep in mind that, does anyone disagree with the notion that we're really looking for some executive level ability?
We all said, well-educated, fully qualified.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think it's absolutely executive.
I don't want it up and coming. No complaints.
Well, I would be open to looking at people who are in executive positions and are aspiring to go to the next level.
Yeah.
But, you know, executive experience, active experience, demonstrated success with operations from projects.
White hair and a beard.
Get my head down.
Enough of the big ideas.
So, yeah. With the old, this is always something that I like to do at the end, as a way, it's feedback for me and a way to improve the process. So, are there any observations that would be helpful to planning the next retreat? Was it, was it fun? Was it thorough? Was the pace okay? Was it, I wish the damn facilitator didn't have a gravelly voice.
Pace was okay. Uh, it was, it was good. It was not, it was time well spent. I think we've covered a lot, addressed a lot, and everybody got, we don't ever get to get together without an audience of 100 people and say, I want walkways, I want this, I want that. So, it was good just to get together and everybody talk about what's important to them. So, it was time well spent.
But the, so it turned out, I knew you were concerned about timing. I had my watch off for a while, but the timing was spot on. I think, as you predicted, Mayor, this is a very different council. And I think that we covered a lot of ground. What we now need to do is sort of step back and say, what are the really critical things to focus on? Because one of the dangers with having a council that's really mobilized to delve into a lot of things is you end up scattered in the bed. So, there are a couple of things that we really need to prioritize, right? And really, two, two things right away. The next available special meeting, you need to get Mark in the room, ratify all this search procedure stuff. We need to agree on assignments, right? That's what they're called, the voluntary projects. Um, and that will allow us to move on, on the P, the profile, set up the community engagement. It's like the one, I think everybody at the table said Terry's design, something like that's what we want. We don't want anything like that. That's really, we need to get, that's the next step, get all that, this process, the assumptions that are in the RFP. I, I don't want to fight about redefining the mayor's role, and authorize the mayor to move forward, ask what this is, and deal with the specifics that came up today. And then, for Bob's suggestion, which I think is useful, self-divide the work, but maintain a holistic community. Right? And we've talked about, and we're going to do that. But that's a lot of progress in the underway. I want to make sure that, so, keep our eyes on the prize, you know, and not fall over the map on this.
Were the slides helpful?
I think everything was helpful.
No.
Yeah, I don't think anything was a golly, let's move on, mother. I think everything was helpful.
What were your takeaways?
Mayor has a gravelly voice.
That is true.
No, I think it was highly constructive. I think the, you know, there are, there are very, very, very high expectations. That's always common in elections. Hey, it's actually going to get better, and I voted for these people, and it's all going to work out, and it's all going to fit. It's not that easy. Don't tell me all this new, perspectives are all fake work. So, this is very much for me a work in progress. Unfortunately, Mark wasn't here. We need Mark in, and we need everybody on the same page, and we need to move forward. And I hope that we can do that in short order, and just write the chapters, and, you know, get that meeting out of the way.
You need a date, John?
I was going to say, who's taking responsibility to get us a meeting as quickly as possible? Is Mayor going to, going to do that, or?
Well, I'd be happy to call Mark, or really, the protocol he's made, to call and say-
He told me last night, he thinks she'll get released tomorrow, and he'll be home Friday.
I think he has accommodations to make to his house, but as soon as possible. It's going to allow us to ratify-
Early next week.
Why don't we do an agenda while we're thinking about it? So, I'm going to call ratification. Then, we need to deal with the RFP.
RFP.
We need to-
RFP.
Yes.
Yeah, both RFPs. We need to set up the public input.
And if Mayor can work that fast after her nap, come up with a job description for to send that.
I think we got existing templates and modified and based on our profile.
Based on our profile.
I have a bunch.
Yeah. Yeah, just based on our profile.
So, the only other thing, Terry, is it's going to take me some time to go through four different, five different perspectives, and I, on, in my mind, I'm prioritizing transitions, onboarding, and then I'm going to get to the manager's evaluation, who don't need it immediately. Unless you-
On front end, I do. It's tied to the job description.
Well, diversity order of priority, yeah.
You, yeah. So, if you're going to evaluate it, and it's a skill you're going to evaluate, then you have to, it's an expectation.
So, unless somebody objects, what I'm going to do is act as the editor, put in comments that I think are tenable, go through multiple points of agreement, and send it back out. It's, a lot of the changes are at the margin. The big change I don't have, and I don't know if I'll have it, is a different market situation. It's going to always offend more people than that. Apparently, Mark's already familiar with that, and his work experience is a lot of that.
Let him, let him go with it.
Well, I don't want to wait for him to go out, but he'll stop soon, it's going to be late.
Any other takeaways?
I, I think the way, Mayor, your approach to doing this was spot on. Um, you know, having sat through some strategic planning meetings in the past many, and I'll echo what, what John said about being in the, where that might actually be in. This was a very pleasant experience, and I think, you know, the aha moment for me is to see the alignment amongst this five of us here, and, and Mark as well, but the alignment. So, first and foremost, focused on how we serve our community. But what's important to all of us collectively is also important to most of us individually as well, and that was a, that was a great takeaway for me. I might say awful lot of alignment. We don't have out, a lot of outliers, outlying issues. Not saying that we shouldn't have healthy discussion that we're going to continue to have, but we just see things very similarly. So, great job, love the way that you, you put the agenda together.
Thank you. I tried to book, what can you write more than this?
So, originally, I was, uh, I didn't like the table setup. As it turns out, it's worked very well for conversation because we're closer to each other, and you're not having to look all, all the way down the line. But I'll reiterate my concern, and, and there's only one citizen here besides our staff. I don't like turning anybody's back to somebody who is, who was listening. And I don't know if there's a way to, for us to see the screen, but in future work sessions, I hope we can, can consider that.
Good call.
I, um, apologized before I had to sit down.
If we'd had as many people here today as came to the council meeting, we would-
Would have been a different story.
Would have been a different story. Mark, thank you for, um-
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Mark. You got paid, Catherine. Thank you, Mark.
So, if you can think of, we didn't use the parking lot, but if you can think about anything with the organizing templates that, you know, make this adjustment here, this adjustment there, as John suggested, then, um, I'm going to start moving all of the content. And so, I'll capture, and feedback back to you. Do you want the slides?
Yeah, I wouldn't-
Not necessarily. I'm good.
Send them to me if you want to. I collect everything.
Yeah, I'll take them.
And Bob and I actually print them out, too.
Yeah, you may not know for a couple of days, but as soon as possible.
Are you thinking next week?
I don't know what adjustments, I, apparently, his home has stairs, is that correct, David? Yes, there are going to be some adjustments.
Just while you're out here, you can tell us any dates that you're not going to-
Tuesday morning's a bad morning for me.
There's some really really bad for me.
I'm a little bit salty, but-
Golly. Any day but Tuesday for me.
Tuesday.
No, just, just, we're doing a two-hour crowd work, Tuesday morning at 9:00 AM.
Lisa, um, I'm not available Monday from 9:00 to probably noon, and I'm not available around lunchtime or the evening on Thursday the first.
No, not yet, neither.
Yes, so, like, between 2:00 and, 2:00 and 6:00 would be fine.
Thursday mornings, 9:00, 10:00.
Bob, how you look?
Monday afternoon works fine. Tuesday afternoon I can do. Wednesday afternoon I can do earlier. Thursday night. And Friday morning.
Friday morning, okay? Ready for mine? Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, after 1:30. Thursday, um, yeah, Thursday afternoon, noon time. And Friday, no, Friday afternoon.
Lisa, I'm sorry, I didn't give you the rest of my available dates. All day Tuesday is open, all day Wednesday, and all day Friday.
Okay, I'll just sort that in there.
Okay.
I'm going to do now.
That's correct. Thank you.
So, having all of that, is it easier for you to call Mark?
I don't want to call him either, just to-
No, I was talking to Lisa. No, just talking, please. Thank you for your patience. I think this was a very good session.
John, you had started down the list, next available, special meeting time, and assignments. Was that the end of the kind of to-do list?
Yep.
And then, anything else on the agenda except RFPs and public input sessions?
I think you got it.
Stop, stop there. Okay.
Does anyone yet know who do you want to go on the search process? Chat them off.
Let's get Mark involved.
Yeah, let's let everybody think about it. With Mark in the room, you can give them his rough definitions.
Good job, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Out early.
Those dogs aren't even getting a break.
Thank you. Lisa, if I want your help.
Yeah, so, here's my list, Terry. Finally found it. So, ratifying the search process, which we talked about, the two RFPs, talking about the public input. If we can impose on you, and I know you're familiar with the design, just bring the more, bring specifics. And there was a question from Mark, our faithful observer. I think the max capacity, if I remember correctly, David, we did this during the land, is we were similar exercise tables, with a facilitator, et cetera. And maybe even have dots that went forward. I think we set the room for 70, and maybe we had 50 people. What's the maximum capacity of this room? The tables, we set it up that way. I think that'll be plenty.
These tables, Matt?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, round, I'm, you know, round tables work, but these, we can, we can do this.
I mean, if you're thinking of groups of age?
Yeah.
Five, and who can?
One council portion per table.
Mark thought we might have an overflow amount of citizens who want to come and give feedback. That's why I'm kind of playing with, you know, what's the, the max set that we can use for this.
Typically, Bill, you need a council member at every table. You'd have one room facilitator to get everybody started, introduce what you're doing, get everybody started. And then, amongst the tables, they really just select every quarter, if you will. And, you know, if eight people have the same item, they make a note, this item, eight people, kind of wait on.
And we're just here, pretty much.
But what helps in that exercise, in my experience, is as you launch it and you give them the protocol, it's good to visit, and you probably should be here to help. It's good to visit the table and make sure that there's somebody who's doing the report out.
Sure.
A lot of people don't want to get up and speak about the group.
Sure.
Recorder's capturing it with notes, is more powerful, if somebody says, in my group, you're following.
Yes.
That's what you want.
Yeah, they're, they're reporting for their whole table.
But you can't assume that somebody's just going to volunteer. You have to sort of select them.
Tell them to push it.
And select the right ones.
It's surprising that a lot of people won't come and talk if they don't want to get up and speak. Some people don't want to be bothered and take the notes. But we'll set it up, so.
Yeah.
And some people just want to observe.
Now, are you seeing this with preset questions, props?
I think it helps to have preset questions that just cause people to have a conversation and, or think about it.
Well, speaking of the mayor's virtue, well, that it aligns with what we need to know. So, verifying our profile, looking at the search, the same, you know, we can come up with.
I would expect it to follow some of the exercises we look to.
That way, we can say, yeah, that confirmed, you know, that Bob's going to miss this.
The more information we can provide to give everybody an opportunity to, as they begin to formulate their thoughts, is to see what we've already done. So, the attributes that we've seen, I think, would be, that would make for a more, much more efficient meeting.
That's what we did on Page Parking. We said, this is what she told us she wanted, and so this is what we came up with. And to be able to say the same thing, this is what she told us she wanted, an account manager, and we, we listened. Maybe we followed, maybe we didn't follow, but we listened.
That's all this is, is a listening process.
Well.
I promise anything.
Yeah. Our, our obligation, and solely ours, is to choose the best possible person based on the information we have on our own business, irrespective of what public opinion is. Can't be done without.
But like Bob said, they might pull out one or two jewels we hadn't thought about.
They will.
Or they might just be redundant, but that's okay.
Just notionally, what do y'all think about the final interview? Or one of the final interviews, depending on how we structure that, to give them the budget and the audit report, and see what sense they make of it. And then, prepare a presentation back to us on some aspect of the budget that he introduces, responds questions, how he might address the budget to make it more useful, but just to try to get a sense of his presentation, financial.
Well, I don't know about that. Here's what I do now, and I recommend strongly you don't do this, not do a dinner interview. Having been interviewed many times trying to eat dinner is extremely awkward. And even though it's a nice gesture, it just puts the, the candidate in a possible situation. I would prefer, so you could give him or her a task. I have a feeling, just looking with Terry and Bob the first time, and I've worked with Mark and John, each one of us will have multiple follow-up questions and the first thing to do. Generally, what I would prefer to do is really, I want to say attack, explore the answer given in the first one. Earlier, you said you would approach personnel management person. If they're busy doing a task, we're not, we're not going to give full counsel on yourself the opportunity to go back, right? Because it's just going to be the second time you're seeing this guy. I'll have multiple follow-up questions. I think everybody will. Because when you leave the interview, you're thinking, I didn't ask him this, or he had this. She said something else, a little bit off, or I want to introduce this. Whereas if you give them a problem, you go out and eke it out.
No, they, they take a number, they come back. Otherwise, you actually don't speak for, like, she had an opportunity to spend some time with, which I would recommend.
Okay, well, we can think about that. I, I really, I want the time to really explore the answers, and to really pin them down. When it's easy in the first one, if you've got to stick, if they're any good, they can do people, if they're going to answer a lot of the questions in a pro forma way. We'll see them, we'll have further questions, we'll have their background, bio, research, right? We'll Google them, we'll be able to dig in. I think with this group, that would be a good job, but having them do a budget exercise would be a bad.
So, I've never seen an executive level position like this, where the interview was less than one day, and in most cases, less than two days. So, I hope there's more, going to be more opportunity for us to interact with these candidate or candidates, because the interview process in itself is stressful. You know, people are generally a little nervous. But we do need social time to interact with these folks, to see how friendly they are, how appable they are, can they laugh at themselves, how outgoing are they? You know, we, I don't think we want somebody who's going to shut themselves in their office and never come out and engage and interact with people. So, I hope there will be multiple ways to interact with candidate, a candidate or candidates. But I think it's not unheard of to do a presentation of some sort for this type of position.
So, I'm going to throw the penalty flag. So, we're going to have a search committee and a transition committee. And my very strong recommendation is that search committee, you put a list of suggestions together. So, you, the three individual. That's right. That's right. So, we don't need to, I don't think we need to talk anymore about this at this point.
I was just curious, do you?
Yeah, and I, I like the mul, you know, a full day, I like the opportunity for somebody to, you have the social aspect as well as, you know, the aspect, the opportunity to, to spend a day together. I think that I've been part of a, a number of interviews in the past where there is a formal presentation that's being done. I don't know at this level if that's necessary. I mean, to me, that's more the director level, but if the group, the search committee, if that's the recommendation, is to do that, you know, I'd love to hear more about that.
I don't want them to come in unless we really think we want them.
I do. If they want to do any, anything.
Oh, okay. I just don't want them to come in unless we really think that we want them. Just to take a look at somebody and let's see if they pan out, we don't have that kind of time. If they, if they seem very strong and we think we like them, then let's take a look at them.
I don't want to reopen the, this whole discussion, but there is something related to the search that we did not talk about today, and it just occurred to me, at some point in this early process, we're going to have to establish a budget. And that's not necessarily a budget for what the salary's going to be, but a budget for the process.
That's it, so.
Yeah. Well, what's, I, Bob threw the flag offside. I think we've got all to think about suggestions, the ways to do this, and we've all done, I think many of us have done it different ways. You know, whatever, use focus groups, you know, to involve citizens. You can randomize that or do that in an equitable way, right? You have another set of eyes, and you're watching them, you're asking, eight citizens. That can be public. And so, we give them a problem. You know, if it's, your, to your point, Terry, we can do both. If it's going to be six hour, like, morning, afternoon, in the morning, see what they could develop. I don't know. I'd want to think through that. Bob said the search committee, search people will recommend some things to us.
And, you know, I'm accustomed to spending breakfast with these two people, and two different people spend lunch. Someone else takes them to dinner, someone does a tour around the island, talks about the town, and all of that stuff, and challenges or whatever. So, hopefully, there's time for anyone to spend some money on the tour. And we're still out early.
Adjourned? Yes, good job, Mayor.
Good job.
Just give me a moment.
I'll make the motion, will you adjourn?
Second.
In favor.
David, this is all your fault.